Testing one two test test. Testing one two test test.
So it is February 11th at 6:03, so I will call the North Kingson School Committee Business Meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to recess into executive session pursuant to RIGL 42464 for discussion of any discussions of job performance, character, or physical or mental health of a person or persons provided that such person or persons affected shall have been notified in writing and advised that they may require that discussion to be held in open meeting pursuant to RIGL 42465A1, review fee agreement proposed by Attorney Adams, termination non-certified employee A. And then item number two, sessions pertaining to potential litigation/ legal advice and collective bargaining pursuant to RIGL 42465A2 of NK, VCA negotiation update, and ESP negotiation update. And then item three, discussion of any investigating procedure regarding allegations of misconduct, either civil or criminal pursuant. Can I get a motion to go into executive?
So moved.
Second, okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will come back to open session and I'll disclose there were no votes taken today in the executive session. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Phone copies.
Erin Arrow.
Here.
Robert Case.
Here.
Jennifer Lima.
Here.
Megan Riley.
Here.
Sherri Kennedy.
Here.
Joshua Fertado.
Here.
Joshua Bush.
Here.
Pay in the calendar, please.
Tuesday, March 4th, School Committee Business Meeting, 7:00 PM Central Office. Tuesday, March 18th, School Committee Business Meeting, 7:00 PM Central Office. Advisory Subcommittee Meetings. Building Advisory Committee, Wednesday, February 12th, 4:30 Central Office. Budget and Finance, Monday, February 24th, 4:30 Central Office. Health and Wellness Advisory, Wednesday, February 26th, 4:30 Central Office. CLAC Advisory, Wednesday, February 26th, 6:45 Central Office. Policy Advisory, Monday, March 3rd, 4:30 Central Office. We will have school committee office hours, Monday, February 24th, 5:30 at Central Office.
Okay, thank you. And the first item on the agenda is a presentation from the North Kingston, of the North Kingston School Department's 2024 financial slash other presentation, and so I believe Mr. Connors is here, so we'll go ahead and do the podium.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me. Happy to be here tonight to talk about the 2024. Oh, great, we have a slide, that's right. Even better, let's see if I can get this correct. We're going to talk about the 2024 financial statements for the North Kingston School Department. Certainly feel free to ask any questions that you have along the way, I'll do my best to answer. So, if you were to read through the financial statements, you'd read that we issued a clean audit opinion, which means we feel the financial statements are free of any material in the statements. It's a lot of work getting a town of this size's financial statements done and audited and issued by mid-January. It takes a lot of communication with both finance departments at the town, at the school. It's a larger endeavor, and so I'm excited that we were able to issue them in January and be here in February to present them to you. I think that is very helpful from the school department's perspective when you're putting your budget together. Hard to know where you're going when you don't know where you've been, so having this information, I think, is beneficial. Also, this year, the town's financial statements, well, I should say last year, were submitted to the GFOA for a certificate of excellence, which was awarded. That certificate is included in the financial statements. There's a lot of extra work that goes into obtaining that certificate, both from the school department and from the town. A lot more rigorous reporting regulations that need to be met, and so to be awarded that certificate is quite an achievement for both the town and for the school department. So, getting into results, the school department ended with unrestricted, unassigned, I'm sorry, the unrestricted fund, which is the school's general fund, ended the year with a signed fund balance of 6.8 million. Comparing that to your operating budget, it's about 8.9%. In fiscal '24, your overall fund balance in your school unrestricted fund increased by 929,000. There's a few reasons for that. The first was that revenue was favorable compared to your budget by $1 million, predominantly due to strong investment earnings for, you know, good economy in 2024, and also state aid that can be challenging to budget for. So, revenue was $1 million above what was anticipated, expenditures were $2.1 million below what was budgeted for. There's favorable variances in salaries of $1.6 million and professional services of $443,000. So, if you're looking at this and you're saying, well, we brought in $1 million of revenue, more, we spent 2.1 less than what was anticipated. How did we have a $900,000 increase in our fund balance? There was a $1.7 million transfer from the school unrestricted fund to, there's a separate fund for the school department's capital projects that's used for one-time capital appropriations that you don't go out to bond for, so that fund is tracked separately. $1.7 million was transferred from your school unrestricted fund in 2024. The school expended $1.9 million in federal ESER funds, and I think it's important to note that because those ESER grants were not renewed in 2025. That's a revenue stream that has essentially gone away. There was three tranches of the ESER funds, as I'm sure you're aware, but there was not a fourth. So, $1.9 million in spending in 2024, that pretty much won't exist in 2025, having those funds available. The school lunch fund, which is your major enterprise fund, had a net decrease, a decrease in net position of 56,000, leaving you a total net position of $1.9 million in that fund. As we look at your fund balance in your school unrestricted fund, you can kind of compare it to where you were a few years ago. We've got a basically an eight-year graph here. You can see during COVID, the 2021, 2022, a lot of school departments started to see savings when you had, you know, transportation that wasn't occurring. You had, you know, outplaced special education costs that were maybe more limited. And so you started to see that decrease as things got back to normal in 2023, and then here's where you sit in 2024. That blue portion represents what is considered a sign, but it's really a sign to educational purposes. The school participates in two pension plans, both with the state of Rhode Island. You combine with the town to participate in the MERS plan, which is funded at 83.9%, and the teacher retirement plan, which is funded at 65.8%. The state tells you every year what your required contributions are to make to these plans dating back to 2014. The school department has always fulfilled that obligation to the degree that which the state has requested. The school also has a other post-employment benefit plan, which is a gap plan for retirees before they hit age where they're required to be on Medicare. So, this liability has not ballooned up over the years, it stayed about the same because it really is just a, you know, a two or three-year gap health insurance that you offer to retirees before they hit Medicare. So, it's not funded, it's pay-as-you-go, but, you know, there's probably not a reason to restrict some of your assets to fund it if it's just a bridge plan. Recommendations, we really didn't have a lot this year, as far as, we didn't have any findings to report. We would continue to recommend cybersecurity training. We hear more and more communities being hit, whether it's school departments or towns. And also recommending performing vulnerability testing through your system with your IT provider. We tested two major programs on the school department for federal compliance. It was the ESER funds in 2024 and the child nutrition cluster, which is predominantly your school lunch program. We tested to make sure you're spending the federal funds appropriately, you're reporting them to the state and to the feds appropriately, and through all of our compliance testing, we did not note any non-compliance to bring to your attention. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you so much. Any questions from the committee?
I just have one. Can you just advise what the target percentage is for the fund balance? You said are we at 8.9? Where does that fall in the range?
Yeah, every community's different. Some communities have like a minimum and a maximum threshold of what they want to be at. You know, every town has its own challenges. 8.9% is a pretty healthy fund balance as far as compared to your budget. Typically, on the town side, we would say anything between 8 and 16% is a pretty healthy place for a town to be for their unassigned fund balance and their general fund. Now, obviously, the town, your department of the town, so if things ever went south here, you know, they would be there to, they'd have to be there to make up for that deficit. So, you know, their level of funding is probably not more important, but, you know, it's a bigger driver of the health indicator.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee?
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, great job to the finance. Okay, that brings us to the end of our presentation, so we'll move on to citizens' comments. Pursuant to policy B E, individual comments are respectfully requested to be limited to five minutes. And so, the first one is Jesse Friedman.
Hello all. Thank you for holding this meeting and having us have the opportunity to speak. My name is Jesse Friedman. I am a former adjunct professor at two universities in Rhode Island, a former Green School Board member, and a parent of a North Kingston High School junior. This is in context to the recent Title IX rollbacks related to transgender protections, and I just want to make a statement around that. So, I'm here to ask the school committee for a clear and unequivocal statement affirming that this district will continue to uphold Rhode Island's state, Rhode Island's state laws and protections for transgendered students regardless of federal rollbacks. Excuse me. Rhode Island law explicitly prohibits discrimination based on gender identity and education. And the Rhode Island Department of Education has clear policies protecting transgendered students and their rights. These protections are not optional. They are legal obligations under state law. But beyond the legal requirement, this is a matter of student safety. Transgender youth already face bullying, isolation, targeting, targeting simply for existing as who they are. Any wavering on this committee's behalf will reinforce malicious behaviors and send the message that these students are not fully protected. It is absolutely vital that transgender students know that you have their back. Since Rhode Island laws require that this district protect transgender youth from discrimination, can this committee confirm without hesitation that it will follow state law and ensure these protections remain fully enforced? It is state law that you're required to do that.
Sorry, your policy, you don't respond to citizens' comments, but thank you.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next person is Alexis.
Good evening. I'm Alexis Ada Adamonas, and I'm a junior at North Kingston High School. And I am transgender, and I'm here to represent my community, my trans community and my school community. When I heard that Title IX was being rolled back, it instilled a sense of existential dread in me because I and all of our students at NKHS are told that Title IX protects you. And it's something that's put up in the halls, it's put up in school presentations at the beginning of the year. It's the thing that protects you, and all of our students have understood that. And I know students who are trans who have used it to get bullies off their back. I know who, people who have used it to affirm their right to be in the right bathroom. And people have come to me, and they are equally as afraid as I am. And what's terrible is that there is nothing more scary than having a government attempt to take away your rights to be who you are. And even if, God forbid, anyone were to ever feel unsafe with a trans person in the same bathroom or around them ever, which is not something that happens because trans people are just like any other group of people, it would still be terrible to rip away an entire group's rights. It's just something that does not make sense. And so, there's a fear that goes in that, and that needs to be validated and upheld. And of course, like we just saw, you don't respond, but there is something that needs to be done and maintained about this that if trans students can't have Title IX, we need to have the same protections that any other group of students would have, even if we don't call it Title IX, something else, something that makes us feel and are protected. And there's something so sad about the fact that I don't know what I can do as a student other than just be here and take in all the pain from my fellow students. And again, I've reiterated this word so many times, but fear is something that we're all feeling right now. And I would, and my trans friends would, and the entire school community would love to get rid of that fear and create a strong connection with the school committee and the faculty and anyone that can protect us and all groups. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, so, oh man, sorry, Alexis is a lot taller than me here. So, this is also on the topic of the Title IX rollbacks, and obviously we haven't brought that up in the meeting yet, but since this seems like what everyone's talking about, I thought I'd say something too. So, as I am glad for my trans friends who have, sorry, I'm really glad for my trans friends who I love so dearly that the school committee will be choosing to continue protecting them. This victory here does not mean that we should overlook the crisis that us meeting here today about this is a symptom of, because it's a symptom of fascism. By trying to take away Title IX protections of trans people, we will be pushing other people and vulnerable groups in our country closer to oppression. Donald Trump's executive order to bar trans men from sports, which obviously isn't what we're talking about, but it's in the same area, isn't only posturing but completely useless. It'll only affect like five or 10 people in the whole country. Policies like this are only doing more harm than they are doing good. Nobody is protected when another group is targeted. As we know, in Nazi Germany, LGBT people were among the first targets of violence and censorship due to the perception that other groups would not stand up for them. If we don't stand up for other people, trans people, they won't be here to stand up for us, cis people, when Donald Trump makes efforts to discriminate and defame against other groups, like other LGBT people, women, racial and ethnic minorities, the poor. If you're not making an effort, you should be, and if you're making an effort to make things harder for my trans friends, you should be ashamed of yourself. If you're a grown adult who spends all of their time worrying about the sex and gender of minors, you should be ashamed of yourself. You are helping nobody and protecting nobody. I'm a fully cisgender girl, and I'm surrounded by gay and trans friends, and I've never once felt threatened by them for their sexual orientation or for their gender. They're some of my favorite people. Some of my least favorite people are the ones who invade the personal liberties of others, scapegoat, fear monger, and try to hurt the people I love because they have nothing better to do. So, if this committee would uphold the rights of trans people while protecting them under Title IX, I would appreciate it. But we do need to consider the larger implications of this policy in general and think about how it's going to affect us as a country that this is even trying to happen. Thanks.
Our next is Alice.
Hello, my name is Alice Adler. I am the mother of a North Kingston High School student. While the withdrawal of Title IX protections for our trans and LGBTQ kids is indeed a step backwards for our nation, I want to open by saying a sincere thank you to the North Kingston Schools for their anticipated commitment to policies that show they stand by their trans and gay students and continue to support them despite the rising tide of hate and negativity in the world today. It is important for the kind, wonderful, talented, gay and trans students in our schools to see that the community supports them and wants them to be safe. It is important for them to know that they belong and that we adults want them to have the space to be their true selves and thrive and learn and grow and be safe in our schools every day. Celebrating these kids with love, happiness, and acceptance tells all kids, gay kids, trans kids, straight kids, all kids, that the community loves, supports, and values them. I have seen firsthand in my own educational history how fostering a supportive environment is fundamental to helping children succeed and thrive. I also want to thank the North Kingston Schools for pushing forward with policies that foster inclusion and equity for all students and initiatives that celebrate the diversity in our world that makes our schools, our community, and our nation stronger and ultimately better. To the people out there who seek to marginalize, erase, or harm our LGBTQ students, or indeed any students, know that there are many, many of us adults who will stand in your way. We are committed to the health, happiness, and safety of all students. We are committed to the health, happiness, and safety of all students. You will have to literally come through us. Thank you, North Kingston, for embracing all children and letting them know that we adults love and support them and for giving them a space where they can learn and grow and become loving, kind adults who open their arms to everyone. Thank you.
Next is Robert.
Good evening. Robert Carradillo, Westerly, Superintendent Duva, Assistant Superintendent Matanate, Chairperson Earl, members of the New North Kingston School Committee. I am holding copies of RIDE's transgender, gender nonconforming guidance, as well as your Title IX and trans policies, which are now officially not worth a paper that they're printed on. I emailed the superintendent and the school committee on the 21st of January and included a story which reaffirms what I've been saying for almost two years, as well as what I told you personally when I addressed this committee last June 4th. The attempted rewriting of Title IX by the Biden administration was illegal. Title IX was written to protect women against discrimination based on sex, not men identifying as women, not women identifying as men. The federal judge's ruling on January 9th invalidated the attempted Title IX hijacking and Title IX reverted back to its original intent, which is based on sex, not gender identity. President Trump reiterated the same in his executive order on January 20th and with another on February 5th. Blue states like Rhode Island, as well as some districts and RIDE, may need to be reminded of the possibility of legal action in order to facilitate their cooperation, so you may consider this exactly that. Your district now needs to do two things. First, immediately strike any references to gender identity in your district's Title IX policy as Westerly has and other districts are doing, and replacing it with one word, sex. The rest of your policy is fine. Failure to do so would again place the district in violation of Title IX and susceptible to legal action. I believe this is on this evening's agenda. Secondly, immediately remove the current transgender, gender nonconforming, transitioning students policy protocol, that's ACA point one policy, from your website and anywhere else it's published, as it is invalid. Failure to do so would place the district in violation of Title IX and in legal peril. Like all other students, those confused with their sexual identities will be protected from discrimination in your anti-harassment and bullying policy, which is how it should be. They're just not protected under Title IX anymore unless they claim discrimination based on their biological sex. Easy solution for the bathrooms. Any student, any student who is uncomfortable using the facilities of his or her biological sex must use a single-stall lockable facility, period, that covers every kid and discriminates against no one. To be clear, there must be no boys in girls bathrooms or locker rooms and vice versa. No boys rooming with girls and vice versa on overnight field trips. No mandated use of pronouns by teachers and staff. That is a First Amendment violation, which I told you back in June of last year that that was the case. No boys competing with or against girls athletically. And almost most importantly, no keeping secrets from parents regarding the social transitioning of any kind while in school, because there should be no social transitioning at all in school. I know this committee and this district both want to be in compliance with Title IX and do not want any legal action taken against them or any district personnel. Therefore, I urge you and I expect you to do the right thing and in short order. The forcing of others to comply with your unlawful, untruthful, and unsafe obsession with gender identity is over. All of your DEI nonsense is history too. So many of you, especially you, Ms. Lima, lose on all counts. Finally, the kids and the families, thank you, of North Kingston win, not because you did the right thing for the right reasons, but now because you're forced to do so. I and others will be watching closely to make certain that you comply to the letter. Thank you for your time.
Kara.
Hi, Kara Martone, 73, Woodridge Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I had sent an email after the January 11th meeting with some questions on the bond, reimbursement, and enrollment projections associated with the middle school project. And I wanted to reiterate my questions tonight as I see that Stage Two is on the agenda. And I'm hopeful that my questions will be answered in your discussion. So my first question was about the communication with RIDE in January regarding the need for an updated enrollment projection. I thought that the letter from RIDE included some eye-opening information, notably the difference in our actual enrollment for October of '24 versus the enrollment projection that we submitted for the next couple of years. And I was wondering, what is the projection that we're using for our current budget for '26, and why is our projection that's only a couple of years old so far off from our actual enrollment for October? Secondly, the same letter from RIDE indicated that, quote, "As our initial review of North Kingston's Stage Two application dated November 13th, 2024, revealed that the project was on a track to potentially lose $26 million in reimbursement based on the documents that were provided in the Stage Two submission." So a couple of things. Were we told by RIDE in November that our project was already on track to lose $26 million? Is the lower enrollment issue the driver of the lower reimbursements? And if not, what was the driver of the potential loss in reimbursements? And also, is enrollment in the new building a criterion for the 35% reimbursement rate? Which, I mean, I definitely haven't read through everything that was out there for the past three years on the whole project, but I don't think I ever heard that enrollment in the new building was something that needed to be met in order to get that 35%. I thought the 35% was just sort of a blanket, that was the state housing aid or whatever they call it number. And then three, in looking at the agenda packet for tonight, actually, the presentation that was made earlier on the fund balance, I just, I wanted to talk about the fact that we had a $3.2 million operational surplus for 2024, which is a very big number. I mean, if we had not moved the $1,007,000 out of the fund balance into capital projects or whatever it was moved to, we would have, I think we'd have like an $8 million, $8.5 million fund balance number if you look at how 2024 started and if you added the $3.2 million operational surplus. So that surplus was generated by the lower expenses coupled with higher investment revenues and state aid. But that's a really big number. That's actually a direct cost to the town and the taxpayers. So while it's definitely better to have a surplus than a deficit at the end of a year, I mean, that's, that's a really big number that I think we really need to focus on as we're looking at the '26 budget process that we're currently in. And if somebody would want to talk about that, that'd be great. And I know there's probably like another $500,000 usage of the fund balance that maybe wasn't addressed if we had a $3.2 million surplus offset by $1,007,000 of a transfer. There's something else that brought it down to the $900,000 increase from where it was in the previous year. So, anyway, just kind of more of a focus on tightening the budget up and being careful with those dollars, because every dollar that this committee has to go to the town for and ask them to fund for their next year, that's a direct hit to the town. And if the town can't find that somewhere, they find it from the taxpayers. It goes right into your tax bill. Whether we spend it or not the next year almost doesn't matter because the town's already collecting it when we request it. So if we could just keep a close eye on that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Josh.
Good evening. My name is Josh Zarin. I'm the German teacher at North Kingston High School and as of this year, the advisor of the Sexuality and Gender Alliance, or Saga. I hope to speak briefly tonight to emphasize the importance of safe spaces and inclusive policies for the LGBTQ plus students in our district, especially in a time when federal recognition and protections for these individuals are at risk. Saga primarily strives to provide a safe space for LGBTQ plus youth and allies at the high school. This year, students have been particularly restless in regard to the new administration and potential changes in LGBTQ plus rights and protections. As we know, the current federal interpretation of Title IX no longer explicitly protects sexual orientation and gender identity, leaving LGBTQ plus students vulnerable at the national level. Unfortunately, this is likely one of many new policies that aim to remove progress made towards equal rights and protections for our community. Luckily for our students, our district has a fairly robust and inclusive anti-harassment policy, which will continue to protect this vulnerable group to the same extent that Title IX can. Our school's main goal is to educate the children in our community, and we should do so without discrimination. As educators, we know that our students are not fully able to grow and self-actualize unless their needs for personal safety and belonging are sufficiently met. Regarding students in the LGBTQ plus population, this is especially relevant. According to the Trevor Project, 42% of LGBTQ plus youth in Rhode Island alone seriously considered suicide in 2021, and 17%, with 17% making an attempt on their lives. Additionally, 68% experienced anxiety and 52% reported depression symptoms. These numbers underscore the urgent need for continued protections and representation. For some who come from more conservative backgrounds, school might be the only place where they can feel comfortable being out or expressing their true gender identity. I'm grateful for the progress made so far in our district to support and protect our LGBTQ plus youth. Specifically at the high school, Saga has been able to work closely with administration. We've been able to increase availability for gender-neutral single-stall restrooms and help secure a grant for the English department to acquire new literature with LGBTQ plus representation. Our district's policies and practices need to continue to help create a safe space for these students to be themselves without fear of discrimination and to allow these students to see themselves represented in the curriculum. Maintaining these protections isn't just about preventing harm, it actively improves student outcomes, engagement, and success. While I understand that our Title IX policy must reflect federal protections, I am disappointed that as a nation, we are regressing to a society that vilifies and finds ways to legally discriminate against the LGBTQ plus community. I implore the school committee to continue supporting and protecting our queer youth through the following initiatives. One, by continuing to foster representation in our curriculum. Two, by continuing to prioritize training for faculty and staff to help create and maintain safe spaces within our schools. And three, by continuing to support DEI initiatives that strive to strengthen our community by fostering diverse voices in our district. Lastly, I would like to thank you all for your time and attention this evening. Saga and I appreciate the school committee's support and efforts to make North Kingston a safe and welcoming district. I also would like to thank you for standing up against bullies and bigots in our district. I would also like to extend my thanks to Jen Lima, Chevali Finkelstein, and Sally Davidson specifically for their ongoing collaboration with Saga. I'm proud to teach in a district that values inclusion and representation. Thank you for your continued support.
Hi, my name's Christina Lawrence. I have been an English teacher at NKHS for 14 years, and I was formerly the advisor of the Sexuality and Gender Alliance Saga for 10 of those years before Josh. I wanted to speak tonight to echo support for the points that Josh has just made. During my years as the Saga advisor, I heard from club members regularly about how their experiences differed from many of their peers and how their school day is involved additional stressors other students might not even notice. One example that comes to mind is that during last year's club fair, students noticed that some of their peers were taking photos of the Saga signup roster for reasons we could only speculate at, and that others had mockingly signed their friends up as a joke. At the club fair the following day, club members were on edge, wondering who was sincerely interested in the club and who might be trying to antagonize or harm them in some way. We'd perhaps like to think things like this don't happen in our schools, but that would be naive. Protections for LGBTQ plus and other marginalized groups are incredibly important and not to be eroded. In addition to protecting students from harassment, it is also important to ensure diverse representation in the curriculum. I realize this is slightly to the side of the Title IX question, though I think speaks to the broader question of what Eliza was talking about earlier. NKHS has taken many steps forward in this area during my time here, and I want to thank you and our administrators for facilitating that. Two years ago, Saga procured a grant from the It Gets Better Project to increase the number of titles with LGBTQ plus characters in the English curriculum, and it was a joy to watch kids involved in the selection of those titles study them in class the following year. Though those students have since graduated, those texts continue to make an impact. The other day, I asked one of my advisees how she was liking Giovanni's Room by James Baldwin, one of the titles purchased with that grant, and she told me it might be her favorite book she has ever read and that she had already picked out which James Baldwin title she would read next, this time for pleasure. English teachers often talk about books as both mirrors and windows. Some help us see ourselves better, and others give us a clearer view into the experiences of others. I hope that you will continue to support DEI initiatives in NK schools so that students feel safe to be themselves in our classrooms and so their education contains both mirrors and windows.
Hello, my name is Kirsten Reveron. I am a resident of Jamestown and a current taxpayer, and I would just like to come and add my voice to the chorus of people who are here to support the students who are under the, well, the attack of what's currently happening in our country. The rollback of DEI, while unfortunate, I know that this was a Biden decision, and now there's an additional federal issue that's coming down that is causing these kids to feel afraid. The fear is palpable. There's somebody here that's coming that's not even from here, who's pointing his finger at you and trying to threaten you, and I'm encouraging you, don't give in. Rhode Island has beautiful values. The school district has been really supportive of kids as a whole, especially in regards to DEI. And while the language is being removed, the ethic is not. So I'm asking you to continue to shore up the values that we have as Rhode Islanders and as local North Kingston people, me a Jamestown person, to not give in to people from outside with hateful values, pointing at you, calling things nonsense. Do not give in. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
That's the end of the list. Anyone else have to sign up for citizens' comment? Jules, can you pass that?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just have it. Thank you.
Sorry, I was a little late and missed the sign up. Hi, my name is Shaila Micho. My pronouns are she/her. I'm the parent of an NKHS graduate and of a current NKHS student. And I come before this committee to speak as an advocate for trans children and as the proud parent of a trans child. I want to first state that I understand why legal counsel may advise the committee to what I presume is the action to be taken tonight in regards to the district's Title IX policy. I also understand that Rhode Island state law continues to protect transgendered persons, and I value the efforts this committee and the schools have done to protect transgender students. Though I object to the rescission of the transgender policy or any part thereof, I understand the underlying reason. I also know that it is the wrong decision for our students and our community, and I know that it will go the way of every other attempt to trample the rights of a minority group. The rights of transgendered people will be vindicated, perhaps not in this current political climate, but in the not distant future. And their rights will stand as they are, equal to cisgendered people. We are suffering through an un- We are suffering through an unprecedented time of performative politics by a group of depraved and craven and needy people who lack a fundamental understanding of biology and a basic level of empathy and human decency. This misuse of federal power in the courts is unprecedented, not because we have not seen similar efforts against other minority groups, but because it is wielded for self-aggrandizement and to stroke the egos of a few and the fears of the masses. It is not being used to keep us safer. It is not being used because scientific data supports it. It is not being used because of an actual danger to any other groups, including women. It is being used for good, not for good, but for evil. But evil cannot triumph unless good people do nothing. And we are seeing good, strong, informed, and critically critical-thinking people do much. And so this decision, while temporarily necessary, will not be the end of this story. It will not be how we close this chapter. And one day, it will only be a footnote to the hateful people who have perpetuated it out of their own fear and ignorance. To quote a recent New York Times article, "As these campaigns continue, Americans would do well to remember the hard-won lessons of our history. We have overcome before, and we will overcome again." Thank you.
Any others? We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Duba?
First item on my report is I want to just bring attention to our arts department here in district and a recent award that the school department is receiving for arts. It's the Rhode Island Alliance for Arts Education District Wide Recognition. It's the Gift of Art to the State of Rhode Island. This is an award that's going to the entire K-12 art department. The Gift of Art is a collection that we will be able to highlight North Kingstown School Department's student art. Providence Picture Frame professionally frames all nine works. We get nine pieces of artwork from the district that we can showcase. The district will select student art, and then that will be exhibited in the year at the Rhode Island Department of Education. It'll be secured along with past-recognized districts in a permanent exhibit area. All board members selected the North Kingstown School District's K-12 Arts Department as the statewide representative for the 2025 Gift of Art for the State of Rhode Island. We are the only district that has been selected twice for this award since the Alliance initiated this annual recognition. So we will be asking for one of our art teachers to represent the district, to bring forward artwork to be displayed at the state. And I'll provide more information that will be coming about the second one. A few highlights for the high school. One of our North Kingstown High School seniors, Susannah Compton, has won the Silver Key, which is an award through the Scholastic Arts for a piece of work that she created that was titled "Fire and Water." Her artwork was judged to be of exceptional quality. The Silver Key acknowledges outstanding creative achievement and often signals that one's work stands out among a competitive pool of submissions. The Scholastic Awards are among the largest and most prestigious contests for young artists in the U.S., so congratulations to Susannah. This weekend, our high school robotics team has competed in the state robotics competition on Saturday. Three of our teams qualified for this year's championship based on their previous competition results. These teams are 701 The Gom Squad, 9219 If It Ain't Broke, and 15374 Bolts and Bytes. All three teams made it to the playoffs and was named a Rhode Island Dean's List Award winner, recognizing them as someone who best performs, personifies the mission of First Robotics, and now is junior AJ Lauren. AJ is now eligible to be one of the 10 recipients for the award at the world level. If It Ain't Broke is a team made up of entirely freshmen. They finished the day as the captain of the fourth-place alliance. They also won the Control Award for the Best Use and Explanation of Their Programming That Controls Their Robot. Bolts and Bytes, composed of juniors and sophomores, was a member of the third-place alliance and also won the Think Award for the Best Explanation of Their Engineering Design through their written engineering portfolio and judge interview. As a result, they have qualified for the New England Premier Event in April. The Gom Squad, North Kingstown High School's varsity team, made up of juniors and seniors, won the Rhode Island FTC State Championship as the captain of the first-place alliance. They also took second place in the Control Award and second place in the Inspire Award, the top overall judging award which combines all aspects of the season, including design and documentation, community industrial outreach, and robot performance. As a result of winning the state championship, the Gom Squad will now move on to represent Rhode Island at the world championship, which will be held in Houston, Texas in April. So congratulations to the robotics team. They're, once again, doing well and making us proud.
So there's a new thing this year, and if I'm not mistaken, they can actually choose from one of any number of locations for the finals, anywhere worldwide that these locations are off, this competition is offered. So they didn't, that was just announced that evening. And also our two coaches, do you want to talk about how they won? The first and second place, Ms. Shields and Mr. Powell, won first and second place coaches' award.
Yeah, and so I want to also just kind of thank our coaches as well for all the time and effort they put in. I know there's a lot of nights and weekends that they're preparing, and if it wasn't for the both of them, our teams wouldn't be where they are today.
And they were back at it tonight.
Yeah. They're busy.
Oh, yeah. Congratulations.
I also want to highlight senior Takara Clayborne, who created the TK Girls Wrestling Tournament as part of her senior project. The event was open to girls in Rhode Island, Mass, and Connecticut. Nearly 50 girls participated. Takara's goal was to put girls wrestling on the map in Rhode Island, and she definitely did so. She is one of three female wrestlers on the North Kingstown High School Wrestling Team. Her hope is that the tournament becomes an annual event. Great job, Takara. At Hamilton Elementary School, our art teacher, Mrs. Casparian, was recognized for facilitating the contribution of over 25,000 student works of art to Artsonia, which is an online student art gallery. Artsonia quoted that your school's digital gallery on Artsonia is a testament to your dedication to your students and the school art program. The art teachers' efforts have created a more art-centric community as student artwork is visible worldwide, so thank you to her. I also want to congratulate the Hamilton Elementary School chess team for a 2-0 start to the season. A recent win against Kingston Hill Academy included the varsity going 4-0 and the junior varsity going 7-0. Great job. A lot of great things happened. Stony Lane's Kids' Heart Challenge. Stony Lane raised over $16,000 for the American Heart Association Kids' Heart Challenge, American Heart Challenge. Thank you for their efforts. All students earned a game day in the gym and what an amazing accomplishment at Stony Lane. And thank you to Mrs. Perkins, who, you know, runs that. At Davosville Middle- Last one, one more. So this is something special. So at Davosville Middle School, one of our social days teachers, Mrs. Wackowski, was nominated for a fellowship through the Armenian Association. So she was put in to be able to participate in some professional development and be part of the Gen Ed Teacher Fellowship Program, and she was accepted into that. So this is something that is really exciting for her and for our school. She earned a fellowship with the Genocide Education Project. The Genocide Education Project, in partnership with the American Genocide Museum and Institute in Kiravan, Armenia, will host the Gen Ed Teacher Fellowship Program in Armenia, July 11th through 20th of this summer. She has earned a spot to be there, and the partnership combines Gen Ed's expertise in training social studies and English-language arts educators with a unique role in Armenian genocide remembrance and research. So she'll be able to go out there, run all that, and bring it back to our schools. And my last item, I just want to provide an update to the school committee and the community regarding our redistricting plan for next school year. So as we all know, we did put a committee together this year for school redistricting to look at the boundary lines, mostly of our elementary schools due to the overcrowding that we have in some of our schools, specifically Hamilton. So the committee has been meeting. We have another meeting coming up right after February break. We'll be bringing a recommendation to the committee of certain neighborhoods that will be shifted. So, you know, we are looking at moving some neighborhoods from Hamilton to Fishing Cove, some neighborhoods from Fishing Cove to Quineset. This is necessary. We've been working with the committee as far as what do we need to consider. And one of the things that came out of this committee, which is representative of families in the area, teachers, staff, students, and administration, and school committee, is that we really need to look at the data. We know that making decisions about redistricting is a very hard decision. There's a lot of emotions that go into this, but we have to look at the data that we have. And the data is showing that we have overcrowding at Hamilton, and we cannot house all the students there, and we have other schools that are underutilized, and we do need to make this shift. So I'll be bringing a recommendation forward, hopefully in March, to the school committee to be able to make this recommendation for the '25-'26 school year. The committee is also looking at transportation as well as school start times. So there's a lot that goes into this. You know, we're looking at neighborhoods. We're looking at populations of students. We have to consider what grade level those students are in. If we make this move, how does it alleviate Hamilton? What does it do to Fishing Cove? What does it do to Quineset? You might be thinking, community members might be thinking, why aren't we looking at Stony Lane and Forest Park? There are specific reasons. So we're not looking at Stony Lane and considering any moves because the closest schools from Stony Lane would be Forest Park or Quineset. And there's going to be some construction that's going to be happening with the bridge on Devil's Flit-Davisville Road area. Right now, we can't transport through there with the school bus. If we shift neighborhoods from that end of town over to Forest Park and Quineset, we don't have a direct route to get to that school, which means it's going to increase transportation time. We're going to have to reroute through going up, like, Frenchtown Road. So we're looking at all of that and the impacts on that. So that's why we are looking at Hamilton, Fishing Cove, and Quineset. We're also looking at the population of Forest Park. You know, we don't want to underutilize Forest Park either. So there's a lot that we are looking at and considering. We are also considering school start times. There's requests of the high school, but we're really doing this in phases. It's important to really be strategic in what we're doing. So the first phase would be the redistricting of the elementary schools for next year because that is a challenge that we have and we need to alleviate that. Then we would be looking at school start times and the transportation is part of that. Does the impact, do we have enough buses in our fleet? Is there a financial impact on that? So all of that is being considered in our next meeting. It is February 25th.
Any questions regarding superintendent report? Okay, let's move on to routine items. Can I make a point of order? Can I make a motion to move on to the agenda item? Yeah.
E4 and 5.
I'll say it.
Okay, all is in favor of moving E4 and 5. In unfinished business to the next agenda item, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, I'm assuming you want to kick it up a spot.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to discuss policy ACB, and ACB is a little too-
Second.
Thank you, everybody who came out and spoke tonight. I want to say what hasn't been said yet, which is I personally have done everything I can since I've been in this position to add a K4 inclusive policy specifically, as they write, to trans students especially. And to have to bring this policy forward tonight for deletion is not something that I ever wanted to do or would be doing if it wasn't necessary. This policy is being recommended for deletion based on changes in federal law. This is not something that we, as a school committee, initiated. All districts that have the post-August 2024 Title IX policy in effect have to eliminate them based on a U.S. District Court decision. It has been said by many people tonight that this only changes things at the federal level. Rhode Island still has state law, and we still have district law that still provide the same protections to the students that were in place before today. And, you know, I consider those to be the ceiling, not the floor, and there is no reason for any student to think that they have less protection today than they did yesterday. And I think it's really important that the students hear us. The only thing this changes is that any complaint based on gender identity is no longer covered under Title IX, but it is still covered, you know, based on our policies. So again, we're doing this based on legal advice. That's the only reason. And I also want to say that this doesn't have anything to do with any executive order. This is based on the vacation of a, I mean, the vacating of a district court decision. As far as those executive orders that have been issued go, we're monitoring them all and any pending litigation, and we'll be making decisions as soon as we have clarity on their legal status. But, so based on the recommendation from the attorney, and I'm going to recommend that we delete our current Title IX policy and revert back to policy ACB.
For, just a point of order for recommend, usually we see things twice.
We don't, because this is to comply with the law. I confirmed with Andrew that we're doing it tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? I just wanted to take a minute to speak directly to the LGBTQ students, especially those who spoke today, just to assure you that you have my full support and that I am committed to providing you with safe and welcoming and enriching environment to learn and grow here in North Kingstown. And as Ms. Lima said, you know, this was at the advice of our legal counsel, but you are truly the heart of our school community and that I will do everything in my power to make sure that you have the resources, care, protection, and encouragement that you need to thrive here, so just on that.
Thank you for saying that, Chair.
Any other discussion?
I will just add that, you know, you guys are my community. I'm an openly gay man, and I was where you guys were when I was in high school and middle school and that area, so I understand what you're going through. And you will always have my support. And anything that I can do to be there for you, you can count on me 1,000,000%, and I hope you know that. So I reluctantly have to agree to this. I don't like it. I don't think it's right, but the law is the law. It went through the court system, and we have to comply with the law, unfortunately.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll take the vote. All is in favor of the deletion of ACB with the replacement of ACB. Please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. We'll go back up to the top of the agenda. Can I get a motion to seal the executive minutes from January 1st?
Second.
All is in favor, and as I disclosed earlier, there were no votes taken today in the meeting. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. For the consent agenda, before we make a motion to that, does anyone want to exempt anything from the consent agenda?
D1.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, you're now can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda with D1 removed?
Second.
Okay, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move on to the different reports. So the first one. Sorry, thank you. Yep, most certainly do. Can I get a motion for D?
I'll make a motion.
D1, excuse me.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Okay, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to advisory subcommittee reports. First one is DEI.
The DEI Advisory Committee has met twice since my last report. And then on January 22nd and February 5th, we discussed the NKSD Equity Vision Statement and potential ways to roll it out. The committee's made a recommendation on what we feel is the most impactful and effective way, and that recommendation is on our agenda for this evening. We reviewed the questions for a proposed survey to high school students to seek their input on solutions to address issues that they experience. They'll be discussed with the student union for further refinement and then brought back to the DEI Advisory Committee to make a recommendation. Robyns and Maddie and Sally Davidson gave an update on the planning for the March 2025 Equity PD and the multiple options available for the staff to participate in. And we also discussed a potential review slash audit of the district's accessibility, and we'll seek additional input from CLAC on areas to be considered. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 19th at 5:00.
Thank you. And questions reverting out of court? Okay, budget and finance?
I'll report on that. Last meeting, we had a review of the proposed FY '26 budget. That was then, which we're working on right now and presenting to the school committee.
Policy? The Policy Advisory Committee last met on February 3rd. Oh, no, it's the wrong one. Hang on. We continued, what did we do? We continued, oh, crap, hold on. We continued our-
We continued our review of the district transportation policy. Final updates were made, and the committee voted to send that on to the school committee for their approval with the visions as discussed. That's on our agenda this evening as well. We discussed the policies relating to assigning students to school, attendance boundaries, registration, and request for reassignment. Administration will be reviewing the proposed changes and will be discussing them again in our next meeting. We also reviewed the district's BARPA and implement weather policies and proposed revisions and voted to send those changes on to the school committee as well. Those are on our agenda tonight also. The next policy meeting is scheduled for March 3rd at 4:30.
Thank you. Any questions regarding that? Okay, and then moving on to Temporary Advisory Committee on District Discipline.
The Temporary Advisory Committee on District Discipline met yesterday on February 10th. We put together a recommendation for the school committee. There's just a couple more data points that we want to include in there that we're just gathering up, and we are looking forward to making a, presenting our formal recommendation to the school committee at the March 4th meeting.
Thank you. Any questions regarding that? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. Dr. Duba, before we get into school budget, is there anything that you want us to move up?
Yes, I'd ask that the discussion of the Stage Two is moved up because we have presenters here.
Sure. Can I get a motion to?
I'll make a motion to move up the capital improvement on campus.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, can we get a five, well, do you want a five-minute recess?
I see right to the rest.
Yeah, we'll take, let's take the five-minute recess?
Yep.
And then they can set up their presentation and then we'll come back. And so we moved up the item regarding capital improvement slash project. And so we're getting an update on our Stage Two application, and so we'll turn it over to Dr. Duba, the head and head representative.
Yes. Okay, so we are in the process of submitting an addendum of the Stage Two. We presented the Stage Two to you prior to the September 15th deadline, which you approved at that point. After submission, they then give you feedback, and if there's other information they're asking for, they do. That's what we've been working on. So we're providing you an update of what we are submitting to them for the February 15th deadline, which is this Saturday. We're going to do the same presentation to the building committee tomorrow. They're going to discuss the approach that we are taking for the questions that they've asked us specifically around the new middle school, and then also a recommendation from RIDE to increase our capital improvement project costs to be able to get more reimbursement back from the state later. And I can discuss that when we get to that piece of the slide down. So Inga Knox is our OPM, and we also have representatives from Perkins as well here tonight.
Okay, do I do this? Or do I do that? Okay. All right, so, hi, everyone. Good evening. Okay, so this is just a high-level update. So this is not, we're not submitting Stage Two again. This is an addendum to the Stage Two that has been submitted in September, so this is going to be actually addendum number two. Addendum number one was a few, confirmation that all the votes and the letters and the memos that we had to do post-September 15th. This addendum is concentrating on RIDE's kind of recommendation to look at the submission one more time to increase reimbursement, to maximize reimbursement, if you will, on Wickford Middle School. And also, they have provided a number of comments as we submitted, which is normal for their, for the process. The reason why the deadline is February 15th is because this is when their new round of submissions start. So they had asked us to submit all the addendums prior to the 15th. However, because of several conversations that have happened since then till now, the demographic study that has been recently, is now being conducted, and RIDE does know that it will follow. I actually spoke to the demographer today, or yesterday, and they are on track. They collected the data, they're done with collection of the data, so now they're analyzing the data, and we should see a report within several weeks. I mean, per the contract, they are saying at the latest, it's beginning of April, but we should see something in March, I think. So there's two, two sections that we have to work with. So Wickford Middle School, one of the things that we've been looking at is increasing of the utilization of the school and the enrollment to 525 students. We're addressing the comments that RIDE had. There are some comments that were more kind of repetitive, some things we just have to answer and confirm, and some things we have to address for the design of the school. And then in terms of maximizing costs, there are eligible for reimbursement. That is based on cost per square foot calculation and how it works with RIDE's sort of formula versus the actual estimate that we have, that we have submitted and we have performed with the estimator. For CIP projects, we had to look at some things relative to the elementary schools where we added the walls. We had to look at daylighting, we had to look at a certain approach to collaborative spaces and address some other, a few other design comments and questions, which we have done since then. And we also had teacher, we had met with the teachers and the end users to address some of those kind of collaborative and educational approach to education in those spaces. Because, because how these schools are, while we added the walls, the, some of them have no windows, some, we had to address the daylighting issue, and also the classrooms were slightly bigger or did not really work, so we had to kind of look into that as well with the C, with the rows, to address that as well. As well as RIDE had asked to just combine, we submitted budgets per project to them, like basically per CIP project, and they wanted to see it per school, so we had to combine all the budgets together, basically, like per school. Should I? All right, so while Perkins' system team will go through the approach to the enrollment and utilization and some things that we did with the, with the Wickford Middle School, this is more of a recap of what RIDE had recommended that we do, and then also I wanted to touch base on reimbursement again. So at the moment, even though we're trying to look at all avenues for the estimate for Wickford Middle School, although we feel that the estimate is adequate as it stands at the moment with the contingencies and escalation in place, so it's, we could, we did look as a team at reductions and sort of value engineering, but at the moment, it stands as is. There are no changes. The CIP projects that were funded by the bond are listed as a $60 million, then there was CIP that we, actually, I said revolving fund, but I think, I apologize, we did rename it into more of a, in case, so in case we have savings, we'll apply that. I should probably change that name.
In my head, I think of it as like next up.
Next up, something like that. I can change that for record as an addition to, so that the presentation is updated.
Thank you.
I know there were questions about that. So, so that is what our submission was, at 141, 453, 470. Since then, RIDE had recommended that we add perhaps CIP projects, perhaps like such as a gym, gymnasiums to the elementary schools or something else in order to, in case there are savings, and in case Wickford Middle School comes in lower, the district has projects to do. And basically, adding those projects will increase the MOA, but it doesn't have to, you don't have to do the projects. You have to only do 50% of the work or the work that is in the bond, which is 137 million.
Just jump in, just to explain that piece, because that amount there for capital improvement is an increase of 16 million from what the school committee previously has approved for our capital improvement projects. So in conversations with the school building authority with RIDE and recommendations of going back and forth with them, they suggested that we increase the requests that we have and add additional projects on there because we're not eligible for full 100% of the 35% back on the new middle school, but you can get 35% back on capital improvement projects. And so their thinking on this is that if you can identify other projects that would represent the difference of what you're not eligible for, for the new middle school, but you could get it back with the capital improvement projects, and you bring that forward and they approve it, then if we have funding to do that and we're able to complete the projects, then they get reimbursed. If we don't go in and make the request, then you don't get reimbursed. So that's why that's there, and that is something tonight that the school committee would have to approve. So we look. So we looked at what would be something that would support and help the schools that RIDE would approve, and it would be adding gymnasiums to the two elementary schools that don't have gymnasiums to be able to feel and provide the similar programming in all of our elementary schools. And that cost estimate is the 16 million that's added there.
So to be clear, we're not adding anything to the CIP because we can't, because we have a certain bond number, but this is almost just your usual try to bill in to get the reimbursements that all.
And this would only be if we had funding to do so, right? This isn't coming out, this wouldn't be coming out of the bond money.
Yeah.
Just like we said with the other four million, which would cover the building management systems. This would be if there are savings or if we had funding over the next five years.
To get something else that's not in the bond.
To do this, right. This would be separate.
What are, what are the two schools?
It would be, so Forest Park and Fishing Grove don't have gymnasiums.
Kenny, I'm sorry, I gotta put you on the spot here, and I apologize. I'm very, I'm still waiting on an answer about the FCI numbers because Forest Park was the worst performing school back in 2016, 2017. So I'd like to kind of hear where we're going to go with this, because if that was the worst performing school and we're going to now build a new gymnasium in it, are we just throwing good money after bad kind of thing? I'd just like to know the long-term strategic plan here because I do know that RIDE had suggested we do another FCI at some point.
Yeah, and we did. We haven't received those back yet. So that's still, we're still waiting for the, the new FCI scores.
I just can't imagine if it was that bad back then, 20% worse than the DMS in Wickford. If it was that bad back then, I don't think it's gotten better in eight years, nine years.
I don't want to misspeak. If, I don't know if that was the school, unfortunately, I would have to go back to my notes.
It was in the master plan.
It definitely was.
It definitely was the school.
Megan, I got the same question. At some point in this project-like process, and I do remember someone telling me, and I'm not sure which director of facilities it was, so don't 100% quote me, but I remember them talking about how there had been done, work done at Forest Park that they believed would improve that number, and that the architects felt that that building was worth maintaining and, and putting money into to keep open, like based on what they were seeing and what had impacted that factor. That's the basis of my recommendation. I agree that we need the new FCI scores, but I do remember them talking about that. And that's when we were approving like the other things that we need to do upgrade-wise in that building.
I don't think it's prudent, though, to do any work on it until we see those FCI numbers.
So if I'm not mistaken, and I, I have to go back and maybe I'll follow up by email. I believe that was the school we looked at for the high FCI, was that?
Yeah, it's the one that has.
Because.
Yours was like 77%.
Right. Because when you look at the FCI, the old report from the 2017, the reason, the driver for that high FCI was, I believe, its utilization and use and technology, not necessarily the structure.
The structure, like, okay.
And I, and I, again, I need to check if that's the school I checked about.
No, that's what I was trying to say.
I did inquire with RIDE at the time.
Trust me, it was the school.
Okay. So I inquire, if that's the school, then I inquired with RIDE at the time about that because we were looking at doing some other work there. And the answer was, first of all, they're reevaluating, so that should be available soon.
Good.
And second of all, basically, if, if the school is structurally sound and it's only the sort of utilization and the space and the size upgrade, and that can be solved with redistricting and upgrades within the school, RIDE would look at, like, we would have to substantiate all of that information, of course, but RIDE would look into reimbursing and participating, even if the FCI is originally high, but that would require substantiation of that. So I would say you are correct. We should look at the new report, and I don't know when it's available, so I don't, we don't have that information.
Do you, I mean, are we talking months, weeks, years?
I have not years.
Although.
Let's, I would say months, but if, I will go back and inquire about that. And I will also, I have a summary of that inquiry at the time from a few months back, so I can follow up by email.
And also too, just, like, I'm sorry, looking at the report, so I'm trying to grab that now, just trying to answer the question. So with the FCI score, yes, it was the high, highest of the schools, but of the priorities, they weren't priority ones.
Right.
Which, it was not priority ones, it was mostly three, four, three, priority three, fours, and fives, and it was mechanical, it was technical. So it wasn't anything on the structure. I don't want to misquote.
There was one thing, I think, and I believe it was in the.
So one other question on the CIP, what he's looking at, that just for my clarification. So we put $60 million of our existing CIP in the bond. The whole list was actually like 100 million. And so there's like 40 million out there that was originally on the list, but instead of adding those, the proposal is to add two items that were not on the original CIP list to begin with?
Yeah, the gyms.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this, it's not a statement on the gyms because I support them, but I'm just questioning why those instead of things that were previously identified?
Yeah.
And do we have backup for that 16 million dollars?
So, so if, right, so if the, if this approach is approved, so the architect has to provide plans and we have to estimate the gyms as well. So we have rough estimates and rough ideas of what that will be, but that's, those two items will follow the 15th. So we will be, I did talk to RIDE about it, and we can submit it a few weeks later.
Actually, can I interrupt real, just to Jen's point, because, I'm sorry, I got just, we just got this document right now before the meeting, and I'm reading it, and Jen, if you, if you guys look on, uh, the notes back from RIDE from the stage two that we submitted, the first thing says, overall, the proposed master plan doesn't provide equity across the district, talking about the difference between now, once you build Wickford Middle, how a $10 million investment at DMS will only address a fraction of the need there. So what's the district's long-term vision for providing equity to middle school students across the board? So, I mean, I guess to your point, like, why are we, I'm just wondering what the justification is for the shift now to two middle, or elementary school gyms, which are needed, but if that was RIDE's recommendation.
So we are addressing some of the things with DMS, right? So they did say equity.
Right.
And I, and.
They did say equity.
They say equity across the district, right? To make sure that you're providing with the middle.
No, to middle school students, yeah.
Yes. So we are looking at with DMS as far as what more we can be doing there.
Okay.
Right? So we, we have in the plan about the, putting a new library in there, updating lockers, bathrooms, some other instructional spaces for our mental health, student services staff.
Those were in the plan that we submitted.
That was in the plan. Then they're asking us to relook, and that's where we met with some of the teachers, talk about some other designs that we possibly could be doing in the future.
So not, not now.
So it's not something we do now, because we'd have to take money away from all the other projects and all the other schools.
I'm still confused, though. So this 16 million would be for two new gyms.
That would be the gyms that we put at elementary schools.
But not anything for DMS, which RIDE recommends, like, to add to.
But I think they did.
Because we're, because we are looking at already doing some things for DMS.
Okay. I just feel like RIDE didn't, they pushed back on that.
So like you said, we just got these comments today, so I'm like trying to absorb everything that they said about our submission and absorb the fact that we're being asked to approve $60 million sight unseen, and I've got to be honest, I'm not comfortable with it.
And this is just a recommendation from RIDE. We don't have to put 16 million into it. They just asked, they put a recommendation there for us to look to see what, what are some other additional capital improvement projects you can put in there to be approved, so that if you, if you get this approved and you have the funding, you can do that.
So I think one, one question I would have is, in the existing CIP, that we have that long list of things, and we pulled out the 60 million plus the 4 million to, to go, like, of that list, but to Jen's point, there were other things on that list. When you all were considering about what we should be adding, and I completely understand why we would add it, and I understand that it might not get done, and I understand that it could possibly get done from the bond or from a different funding source, but what, what are some of, did you, did you all look at that list of what was remaining and kind of determine that, from your administrative perspective, that you think putting these two things on was a better choice for the district versus putting a list of random items from the CIP?
We did, because we looked at, by adding the gymnasium, then you can have equivalent programs at the, at the schools that don't have gyms compared to the other elementary schools that do.
So was it basically RIDE saying they wanted all the elementary schools to be fair, and so the other projects didn't do that, like the adding the gyms would, to make it equivalent?
I mean, it wasn't necessarily saying RIDE saying you have to do that. They just said identify some other projects, and that's what we looked at as far as something that we could put in there as a potential project that would have a big impact on the other elementary schools.
And that would increase our reimbursement. Isn't it kind of like, is that what?
So we would get, those projects would be reimbursable.
But it would be more money that we're spending because that's not covered by the bond. So it's not actually more money back, like, it's just more reimbursed.
It's just, it's just, it's just, it's just something that is reimbursable, right?
So, but to that point, like, if we decided three years from now that we were sitting on $5 million, we could put through another stage one.
We can put through another stage one and stage two in the future.
And get these reimbursement then.
If the reimbursement still exists.
If it still exists.
This locks them in. So that, that's why I support, like, the concept of putting in additional money, because what it's saying is, within the next five years, if Northingstown had the money, either through the bond or in a different funding source, that you would get that reimbursement. Like, there's no guarantee that the General Assembly will continue the program where A and K is getting 35%. That could fluctuate, or B, they could just not be there at all. And so I think that's where this comes in, is just that lock-in piece. But I do hear you about, like, why not the other things? But I am supportive of, like, the concept of putting in more. It's kind of just adding to that revolving line, in theory.
There's no, there's no penalty to doing that, because you have to complete at least 50% of your project costs, and we would do that with the number of projects and building new middle school.
You could also, so for example, if you have an approval for 157, but right now your bond is for 130, uh, I'm sorry, 137.2, if you do decide to, years down the road, you need more money, you can bond more, you can go for another bond, but the approval is in place. And I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm just.
But I know what you're saying, so I'm like locking in the approval.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that.
Just so we have it even if we don't need it.
The approval, the approval from RIDE and the bonding, the, the money at hand is the two different things. So if there is funds, then the approval stands for five years. So you can get your, and whatever bonus points that go with it stand at the time of, at the time of submission and approval, so May in this case, before May of '25. Then next year, I don't know what the laws and regulations are going to be, so we don't know what the next step is at the point. But once you, once stage two is approved, the, the money, like, the not-to-exceed amount, the projects in there, and the potential incentives, should you meet the requirements of those incentives, all lock in.
For five years.
For five years.
Okay.
But we'd have to make that decision tonight because the, it's due on Saturday.
Yeah, that is why. It is on the agenda.
So while we're talking about reimbursements, can you just clarify, the bond is for 137.2, right? And in general, the conversation was 35% on eligible costs. And what, I'd like to get some clarification on the letter that Maria put through saying we were losing $26 million. Can you just clarify that?
So RIDE uses a calculation, sort of like a formula on eligibility of costs, and that has to do with the, it's kind of a balance of students, an area, square foot per student allowance, and the maximum allowable square footage of the building, and then the cost per square foot that they are driving right now. I actually have a calculation for the 525. I did not share it. I can share it later. I need to check some math. I don't want to share it, like, too soon. And I also am a little hesitant to share it because RIDE has to tell me that that's what it is. I don't want to convey wrong information, but I have an estimate.
But like, conceptually, right?
So conceptually, at 400 students, the eligible cost would be somewhere in the 50 million, and this is where the 26 million came from.
Okay.
With 525, so the more students you have, the, the square foot per student number changes as well. It's like, it's like the, per the regulation. So at 525, the eligible cost from RIDE will be about 61, 62 million, and that's at $592 a square foot that they're calculating today. That is changing. We don't know to what, but in May, it's going to be a little higher. But we don't know what it is, so we can't really assume that.
So they, I just want to, so they reimburse based on a certain amount, like, per square foot, right?
Correct.
And so our plan, as we put through, had a higher square footage, deliberately we put it through, but they're saying they won't reimburse us at that higher.
It was a lower square footage. Now the square footage is higher.
Two students higher, yeah.
Right. So right now, we're looking at roughly $15 million of ineligible costs for Wickford Middle School, not for the CIP projects. Those are all eligible. So when you do the math overall, and I did that, but I did it quickly, so that's why I didn't share this today, but I can share it by email later. On 137 million, assuming that those two bonuses, that gives us a little bit more reimbursement, the district is still at 35% local share. So the bottom line doesn't change. So that's still 35% and 65%.
Oh, you lost me.
Yeah.
I was so with you, and now I'm not with you anymore. Here's the question. Here's the thing that I, I want to just clarify. When we went from one middle school to two middle schools, we then were looking at the design for the Wickford Middle School. And we knew, because we weren't going to get the credit for newer and fewer, or whatever that was, was, that that would have some impact, because we were no longer building one school and taking one offline.
Yeah.
So then we were looking at the Wickford Middle School project, and the, and we had gone through and prioritized some things, listening to the educators and the students. And one of those things that we prioritized was having a space where the whole school could gather, and that was a big request of the educators to be able to have that space. So we allotted more square footage to our gymnasium for that reason, knowing that we would not get the full reimbursement on that space. We'd still get some reimbursement, but not the full 35%, and we knew that all along. And we had planned for that, and we incorporated that into the amount that we bonded, et cetera. That's all they're talking about, right, in this piece of it? And when they're saying that we're losing money, it's money that we knew and planned and calculated for to be able to get a building for the educators that we were trying to get.
It is, it is part of that.
Yeah, part of that is that piece. And so it's not like a surprise. We knowingly planned and worked towards what we wanted for a building when we had to pivot and redo the plans.
But what I'm saying is that if that ineligible value kind of reduces the local, the 35%, but because we, when we actually talked to the engineers, and we do have a level of confidence that the 4% on Wickford Middle School for the energy and water efficiency because of the net zero approach will be received for, for New England Chip's incentive, and because the safety and security bonus is still available, but that's only for certain CIP projects. It has to be mostly for safety and security projects. With that, it will offset the small ineligible value that we're looking at. So there's still a 35% RIDE share and a 65% town share that has been looked at and kind of talked into like the tax impact and whatnot, so.
Let's keep going with the presentation, just because.
To make it abundantly clear, we are not losing $26 million. We are not maximizing the amount of reimbursement.
Yeah, it's not that there's a loss.
No, I get it.
Yeah, I know, I know, you understand.
Yes.
Because that's, that's where, that's where it sounded, that we were losing 26.
Right. I think it was a funny, clear letter.
We never, we never had the expectation.
I'm sorry, she's just on.
That we were getting it.
She's in general conflict. Who may not be following along. I think it was a difficult pill to swallow if you're reading it for the first time.
Understood.
All right, let's keep going with the presentation, then if the committee has more questions. We just have, obviously, the budgets next up, so this is important.
Yeah, but this is very important. We have lots of questions.
Okay. So the presentation from Perkins Eastman team will sort of touch on how the enrollment, on the building and then the enrollment of the building and any changes in layout, and it's, so we'll do that.
Hi, I'm Mark McCarthy. I'm with Perkins Eastman, one of the architects, along with Tina Greco. So we also looked at, with RIDE's encouragement, could we increase enrollment at Wickford? So just looking at Wickford, besides the additional CIP projects, could we get more eligibility out of that project? And what they, because of, as Inga spoke of, they have a, a pretty simple formula, right? It's enrollment times square footage times a dollar amount. And square footage per student at middle school and, and the dollar amount is fixed. So the one thing we can work on is enrollment. So what we've been doing sort of for the last month or so is looking at ways and are So what we've been doing sort of for the last month or so is looking at ways and are, the way we were going to take advantage of this is could we design to a higher enrollment without making the building more expensive, without making the building bigger, without making, you know, adding anything? Because then we're kind of diminishing returns, right? It would get more, more eligibility, but the building would get more expensive. And so we're, we worked with our educational programmer and with leadership with the district to look at ways that we can do that. So this is just looking at the, the amount of classrooms we have and the amount of Unified Arts, so the elective classrooms that we have, which are more specialized, and we'll go through that. The other thing that they asked us to look at, and I think it's in RIDE comments, is are we supporting a team teaching approach? So this was looking at it at the original four hundred student program with three teams at each grade level. And then you see the special education program and the Unified Arts spaces. So this is where we were at, including some intervention, intervention and breakout spaces within each team cluster. So then when we looked at, could we, and we went back and forth, we looked at a lot of different scenarios. Five twenty-five, working with the district's leadership and curriculum people, was a number I think that everyone felt comfortable at, that where we were still not necessarily compromising or overloading the building, but getting at a number we felt was at least a design capacity that would help to offset some of this eligibility that we were missing out on. So this, this shows how we do that in, and support the team teaching. And then one of the things we did, and I can show you that in the plan, is we looked at some of the Unified Arts, in this case, world language, which essentially is a classroom. So if we could sort of slide that world language classroom into a core classroom, which means that teacher wouldn't necessarily own their classroom, that's how we increased the, the utilization of each room. So this is where we were when we submitted back in the fall at four hundred students enrollment. And then if we go to five hundred and twenty-five, what you'll see here is that we've added a resource center into the library space to cover one of our special education spaces. We've combined the robotics and computer lab into one larger space instead of two individual spaces. So in this way, we're able to free up some more general classrooms and show at least a, a higher enrollment capacity at the building. That doesn't necessarily obligate the district to, to use this enrollment, but it does help to work with that equation that, that RIDE uses to increase our eligibility.
So this plan deliberately is like planned out with one core special not having a role?
World Language.
World Language, right, yeah. So that, so that when that teacher's on their prep, somebody else can come in and use that classroom. So that's our utilization, that's what we're trying.
Yeah, I just like, I deal with that now because we're overcrowded. It seems to like build a brand new building where we don't have space for everything, isn't exactly ideal.
Right, and I, I'll defer to Dr. Duvva, but it's important, I think, to, to remember. What we're doing at this point is trying to get the most eligibility we can. So it's a design capacity for the building, not necessarily the way that you'll utilize the building day one.
So if there aren't five hundred and twenty-five students, it, there, there'd be a potential that the world language teacher would not have to move?
So what, so the, the whole purpose with stage two is to get your funds for your, for the construction?
Yeah, I know.
And get approval of the reimbursement. And so what was recommended by RIDE was can you increase capacity of the building? Because, because the increase of capacity with, with the increase of students and your square footage would increase your eligibility on reimbursement, so that's what we are doing. So it's saying that there could be a capacity of five twenty-five, may not have five twenty-five. But if there were five hundred and twenty-five students, then we would have to put, the world language would be a shared space. It wouldn't be a class of its own if we had five hundred and twenty-five students in it.
But will they now question that, are you gonna have to take the team concept away from DMS? Because like, it's not like we're gonna get all these extra kids.
No, it would be, theoretically, if this happened, you would have less students at DMS and we would re-look at that.
We, we have a slide to that.
So, but you know what I'm saying? Like how would they now come back and say, now you're taking the team concepts away from DMS?
No, I'm saying that.
Well, let's, let's get to that because we already had those questions ourselves.
I still have a question on the previous slide.
Sure.
So you're submitting to RIDE, right, with, okay, ideally, we could fit a maximum of five twenty-five. We don't have that, but that means you have to make that square footage enough to have, like to, to be able to fit those kids. So the way that our enrollment is tracking, the declining enrollment, are you then going to submit to stage two? And then after stage two, then we can whittle the building down?
No, we would, we would not.
Is that value engineering?
So we would not be changing the square footage of the building.
But then you have a building that's bigger than our enrollment projections over the X amount of years.
It's how we're using the classroom spaces, because if you look at the previous slide, we're not changing square footage. So the building where it showed the four hundred students
Yeah.
is the same size as the building of the five twenty-five. What we're saying is we're using the spaces differently
Are.
in order to have a capacity.
Energy efficient and all that stuff? I, I mean, in other words, to me, a building that was built for another extra hundred and twenty-five people, but you're not using it for an extra hundred and twenty-five people.
It's the.
Am I missing something?
It's the other way around.
We're, we're, we didn't, we didn't increase the size of the building just by using the. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Oh, we're, we're increasing the utilization of the classrooms. So teachers don't own their classroom in this scenario, in order to get that, you know, to, to show a capacity of five twenty-five, but the building hasn't gotten any bigger. So that, you know, that's right now, at this point in time, how we're trying to maximize our eligibility.
Okay, thank you.
And, sure.
In stage, do I need to?
Yeah, you need to talk to the microphone.
In, in stage three, in a subsequent stage, we still have a chance to look at the design because we have to do the schematic design. So this can get all refined and re-looked at in stage three as well.
And they don't look at that and go, this isn't what you said in stage two?
Actually, I have a project where the whole building and, and have changed from two stories to three. And if, as long as there is a reason to substantiate it and look at why, you know, you can still change things in stage three. It has to make sense and it has to be approved and looked at, it has to have a reason for that. But right now, we are showing what we can maximize, and then we can decide what we're gonna do.
So can you, someone explain this slide to us?
Yes, I'll try. So they, we also do to, to some of the questions, we have to look at it, you know, holistically, at the middle school approach, not just to, to, not just to Wickford. So in this scenario, and I, I will say upfront that right now, we're using that nine seventy number, which came from flow analytics, demographic study, simply because we're still waiting on the new demographic study. So when that comes in, that number may come in a different than nine seventy, and we'll have to rerun those numbers. But that's our most favorable right now that we have in hand. So we're looking at this breakdown of, of the nine seventy, five twenty-five at Wickford, four hundred and forty-five at Davisville. And then you can see how that works in terms of the amount of classrooms. So we're showing twenty-one at each, by the way, that's would free up some classrooms for different, for more support program at Davisville. Because I think there's a, there's a few more than twenty-one classrooms at Davisville. And then we get our capacity, so the functional capacity is based on our classroom number. But then you can see the utilization is higher at Wickford because we're projecting five twenty-five versus four forty-five at Davisville. So you get your eighty-five and a hundred percent utilization, which is a blended nine, ninety-two point four, which is well in the range of what RIDE is looking for. Pretty much anything north of eighty percent is acceptable for RIDE.
But isn't our current less than nine seventy right now?
Yes.
So do we think that it's gonna come in higher?
So.
You mean what they're working on right now?
You mean if, if it'll come in higher than nine seventy for student enrollment?
No, I mean, it's gonna come in much higher than our eight sixty-two, isn't that what, right now?
So that, and I said, that is the projections that we have from the flow analytics projections.
The nine seventy is based on the new data.
Yeah.
Currently, not the new data that they're working on.
Right, we don't.
Got in, and we'll get it after the fifteen. That's what I mean, like what if that comes back eight seventy? Is that gonna throw off all this?
If it does, then we would have to change.
We'd still be within that percentage, I think, of, of what is acceptable, you know?
So we would, okay.
And when thinking about Davisville Middle School, for me, like one of the things that I always think about is that we don't have any storage in that facility whatsoever. So when you walk around DMS, as you know, like there's chairs in the hallway and there's different things. And so by freeing up space at DMS, I think it will make a better learning environment for the students because we'll be able to reallocate space to offices that are needed. Like right now, we know we have school counselors and folks in spots that are not ideal. So I don't think it's a bad thing to be able to shift some of the space at DMS to be able to better accommodate, you know, what we're doing there.
I think I was just more, I think the team concept at DMS is great, like.
I don't think we're getting rid of that, right?
Having two teams is very, where I think if you had less kids, would you not be able to have two teams anymore? That's what I was thinking, because I know at Wickford right now, we, we don't. So if we switch it, I almost feel like we're flipping the team concept.
So that, that could be an impact, right? I mean, if you have, when you have less students, right? You would have to look at your teaming and your schedule. We'd have to then go back and look at the, you know, we would look at schedules and how we do all of that if that was the situation. Again, this is, we're doing this theoretically, right, of what capacity could be in these buildings, where would you go?
I mean, in theory, today, without changing anything, we could allocate, reallocate students from Davisville to Wickford, free up space, they are not at capacity in Wickford, correct?
Right now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so. So I, I get wanting to free up space at Davisville, but I'm not sure that we have to increase the entire capacity for the entire building in order to justify that.
To justify getting more space at DMS?
At WMS.
At WMS?
Yeah.
With the new building?
With the new building.
Right.
So.
But we're, what we're trying to say is.
I understand what you're trying to say, but it, it feels.
RIDE, RIDE's telling us that we, we need to do this. And so that's, I think the part of the story is that this was on RIDE's recommendation, not on what the district asked for or what we were planning for. And so I think what the administration and, and the architects are trying to do is accommodate RIDE's request to put more students in that building. Like that's what is happening here.
But that's only for reimbursement purposes.
Yeah.
Right. So, but then you build a smaller building, you, you save money on the other end. Do you know what I'm saying? So if you don't have to, so maybe we don't get the reimbursements back, but we don't have to build a massive, you know, a building to accommodate RIDE's numbers, you know, to help us to get, you know what I'm saying?
But, but we're not doing that. If you go back to the previous slide of what we submitted, right? That building, we had, we had submitted that for around four hundred students. And we had a larger gym, so we had a common space in the district to be able to use. And we purposely made some of those spaces big, that space bigger, so we had that to be used for the, for the district.
All right.
Right? Then the other spaces we have, we have other, the learning spaces for robotics and computers, right? Separate music space, separate chorus space. We don't have an auditorium, we knew putting an auditorium would make the building too large and budget-wise. So we, we knew not to put an auditorium, but to have a, a stage that would be in the cafeteria. So strategically, we looked at how to use that space.
You know, Inga, you don't wanna give us like an actual number, number from the financial impact of, of what we're looking at, but do we have any sense of the, the difference, like the net difference between building the building for what we had originally planned for and only getting the certain amount of reimbursements versus what RIDE is asking us? Do we have a sense of what that fiscal impact might be? And I won't hold you to that number because I know that you don't determine it, but like, like what are we talking about here?
So, so first of all, just to clarify, we're not changing the building here. We're just taking, changing the approach to the educational program. So the building remains from what we originally submitted for four hundred to now. It's just how it's utilized that's changing. So, so basically, the five twenty-five is going into the same amount of space. It's just how the education going to be taught, that's what's the difference is, to substantiate that. And the difference between the reimbursement would be the ten million, ten to twelve million, depending.
Is it making the, the size of the classroom smaller?
I don't think we change, no.
No.
Same classroom size. It's just how the programs are taught.
How the spaces are used.
Other questions regarding this?
You mean in general, stage two, or just, are you?
Presentation.
Mark, are you done? I wasn't sure if you were done.
Yeah, that's, that was hard.
Okay, I have some questions. The first question is, and you guys can rapid fire these answers to me. I'm just trying to figure out, I'm trying to go backwards with this demographic study that we found out we had to do in the middle of January. The RIDE documentation, the guidelines, I, I brought it up, it says it was, they wanted it done during stage one. So in our master plan, we submitted a flow analytics study that went out ten years. They asked five years minimum, ten years maximum. The first question is, if they wanted it, why didn't they tell us till November of this year? When we're, you know, that was way beyond the stage one, it was during stage two. Second part of that question, I'm sorry, and then you can answer both of them, is why wasn't the flow analytics study, which they didn't reference in their feedback, they talked about the Nezdek study? Why wasn't the flow analytics study good enough?
I don't, I'm not, I don't think I can answer that question because I'm not RIDE.
I know, but now, I, I, you know, I'm just very frustrated, I feel like nobody can answer this question for me. And now we have to do another fifteen thousand dollar study, which everybody keeps telling me is a drop in the bucket, but I disagree, I think fifteen thousand dollars is a lot of money. And I'm just, I just don't understand where RIDE's coming from with this. And the fact that now we have to pay for it, and that was, God, you can finish, but I have a second part to that fifteen thousand dollar question.
Do you want to ask?
I did, I guess the second part is, you know, how did no one know that we were going to need this study done? Any, any person working on this? It's in the RIDE stage two, and how come nobody pushed back on why, why the flow analytics study that went through twenty thirty-two? So that's still another five, six years out. I mean, I'd, I'd like to ask them, I just don't feel, I mean, I don't wanna.
Based on the flow, the data was there from what we had.
That's what I'm saying.
And it went out past what.
That's exactly what I'm saying. So why are we being forced to do?
We submitted what we had, what we knew.
That is what I'm saying, and I just wish the RIDE representative was here.
Some of the pushback was that you have new builds, I mean, we looked at the comparison, the flow analytics had the new builds that, that are happening in town.
I know.
That was included in that.
So why are we being required to do another fifteen thousand dollar study? And why are we paying for it out of pocket? How did, how is, how would just, I just don't understand how it wasn't caught.
I can't answer why RIDE requires it right now, but there was, so if you look at the regulations, it does ask for the study, it doesn't necessarily have like, it says current, it doesn't have a specific year, I don't think.
So what we can do, Megan, is I'd be happy to request that, that RIDE come.
We can request information from them, I can answer it.
We'll ask if they wanna come.
But unfortunately, we're in the middle of the study, do you know what I'm saying? We, we, the study's restarted and we have to pay for it now.
Now, we thought the, we, we were pretty, well, we were certain that the study that we have because it's within five years is enough. And, you know, and RIDE also did a, their own study, so why is it requested at this time? As a follow-up, I think it's a question they should answer and discuss with you. But the, the subject of discussion came about when the maximizing of reimbursement discussion, approach started. So it was, there, I think it's mostly comes from a request to confirm the flow analytics report so that we can see that five hundred and twenty-five students and the nine seventy number and the four something number in Davisville Middle is adequate.
No, I understand that, I just feel like they're, they, they're not acknowledging that we did that. And I don't understand why, and, and I'm also wondering if.
I, I don't represent them.
No, I get it, so per the, per the Jacobs contract, per the Perkins Eastman contract, where, you know, I have the contracts right here, where it talks about covering all the stage two submissions, so none of that's covered in our contract with either of you for the actual work on, because that was part of a, if that was part of a stage two submission, I'm just curious.
It's not in our contract.
No.
Per view to do, and it was excluded from, from Perkins Eastman, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
It's in the contract.
Okay, and, and final question on contracts, having to do with all this. I, the contract we have with you guys, the fifty-page contract, was dated September twenty twenty-three. I, the contract we have with you guys, the fifty-page contract, was dated September twenty twenty-three, or twenty twenty-three. You guys did send in May of twenty twenty-four a three-page addendum. I'm just wondering if that's standard, or if, because, like, for instance, even this one still talks about approximately four hundred students in grade six through eight for Wickford Middle. Is there, like, an updated contract that we should be getting, like, a fifty-pager versus the three-page addendum? I mean, is this?
Is it Jacobs or Perkins?
No, this is Perkins Eastman, is this in, I mean, is this, like, I'm just trying to, I feel like legally. Contracts are really important, and I was just wondering if we should have a full new fifty-page contract with Perkins Eastman going forward, especially because there have been so many changes made. And I understand stage three, things change, but I'm talking even just to still say, the original contract still has us at one consolidated middle school, the DMS, the fifty-pager.
So we can look at that. So if you look typically, in typical world, and this is a little bit untypical because of the consolidated and then continuation of several tasks that have happened in the past two years. But typically, there is a contract, which is the AIA contract in place, and that sort of describes the terms and conditions, the scope of work, and the initial cost. And then all the amendments, they are monetary amendments and terms amendments. So if the terms of the contract have changed, such as the consolidated school versus the two middle, uh, one middle school, that should be amended to the original contract because Perkins Eastman contract was written for the entire project. And they were procured for the entire project. That was before my time, but they can also speak to that, and they can certainly review that.
Yeah, I think that, you know, I'd like to recommend that we maybe do something, like, talk to our lawyer, or however you guys have to do it. But I think it's important to have the most updated information on a contract, especially a fifty-page contract, to protect, you know, all of our interests.
Yeah, we can most certainly look into that, but also I want to make sure we stay with the state, what's on the agenda, which is the stage two application. So we could definitely look into that in the future. But any other questions regarding the vote that we need to take today on the amendment two for the stage two that's due on February fifteenth?
What are we specifically voting for?
So what I heard is that, and Ken, do you want to?
Yeah, so I would, I would do it as two votes, we're going to vote. I'd do a vote regarding the CIP, increasing the CIP to sixteen million, because that was something that was previously approved by them. And then vote to, if you approve our concept that we're putting forward.
And the concept would be that five twenty-five for?
Would be the five, the five, the change in the capacity of the Wickford Middle School.
And those are the only two things that you need our approval on today to submit for?
Because, yeah, because the submission of the comments and the feedback don't require school committee approval.
Yep. One of the, one of the questions I had, because we did make that deliberate choice not to have the auditorium and to make the gym and cafeteria the sizes that we did on purpose for a four hundred student school. Now it's five twenty-five, have we negated that concept? Yeah, like, we were trying to be able to have a space where all the students and the staff could gather. I'm assuming we have not increased that space, so like, is it going to fit five twenty-five in there?
It does, excuse me, it does fit the five twenty-five, and we've looked at the dining space that it's able to accommodate and free lunch periods and all that kind of thing. So, yeah, it still, it still works.
Okay.
But it doesn't have that buffer that we deliberately put in.
For family members.
For family members and things like that.
Right, right.
So is that, can I ask, is that size smaller than the one at Davisville?
Oh, gosh, off the top of my head.
I'm only asking because we do have family, like, they do do that stuff now, they are, it's a bigger school. So I'm thinking, like, it's more comparable being five twenty-five, that they can, they can do it at Davisville, it's the same size or bigger, they probably could still do it.
I'm trying to think of where we saw that and what, and that one's, I don't know. I could look at, we could try to.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, like, I was kind of comparing that, I would think that if it's not smaller, that you probably could still do that.
I do think that the middle, if I remember correctly, the Davisville Middle School did express concern too, though, about not being able to, like, I think they make that space work, but they have to do the sixth grade on one day and some of the other days, and we've had fires.
Yeah, like chorus concert with people, like, in the hallways.
Yeah. I think the goal was.
Well, they used to have it all together, they changed it, which was much better than she.
They had to because of, because they don't all fit.
Yeah, but ironically, I think it was actually much more pleasant.
Well, unless you had two kids, one in eighth grade and one in sixth grade, then you got the joy, I'm sure, of going twice.
Otherwise, you were there for three hours.
You know what I mean? So I think the goal is, and it's hard to, I think, do this with a building, is to try to build a space that is going to work for what the educators want. Like, that was our goal, and so it will make it tighter in that space, because we didn't increase that at all. And so the decision that I think we're being asked to make is.
That would be if we did it whole school then.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think, so the decision is, do we want to adopt this plan and potentially get ten million dollars in reimbursements, but have more students in the building, some swing spaces for teachers, and maybe tighter common spaces? And do we want to vote to increase the CIP by sixteen million dollars so that if we ever had the funding, we could get that thirty-five percent reimbursement on that? So can we get a motion for one of those, and then we can open discussion on that piece of it?
Do you think we probably have to do the sixteen million first and then the whole thing together?
No.
No?
So I just need, like, we're in a motion, I think, to, I don't even think, I don't even, we're in a motion to discuss.
To discuss.
I'm thinking, just trying to move us forward, make a motion to.
To discuss the sixteen million CIP?
I'll make a motion to approve adding the sixteen million to the CIP.
Okay. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Kay, a second from Megan, so discussion on just that piece. If, for, for the sixteen million, adding that to the CIP for potentially long, not saying that we're going to add it, not saying that we're looking for that funding, but if there was money available, being able to get that thirty-five percent reimbursement over the next five years.
It's ultimately walking in today versus.
The reimbursement.
Yes.
Per Ride's recommendation.
Per Ride's.
And the administration's recommendation, and the architect's.
Yes.
Any further questions on that one?
We spent, like, a gazillion meetings going through that CIP, like, line by line by line by line. And to be asked to vote tonight on sixteen million dollar site unseen, I'm a no on that, for that exact reason. Like, we put so much effort into analyzing everything. So it's just.
If I have to be honest, I'm a no, I just, I just haven't, I just feel like I don't have enough time. And I feel like when I don't get to look at things, I find things that I have more and more questions on. So I just feel very pressured to make a very big decision that I don't feel comfortable making.
Ken, can we, can I ask Chris a question?
Sure.
Um, sorry, Chris, but as far as your perspective, being the director of facilities, kind of what's your thought on this being put in versus maybe some of the other things that are on the CIP list?
The sixteen million is simply a placeholder. If we lose that opportunity right now, we lose it for good. It doesn't mean we're going to spend it, and I can appreciate your take on it being a big decision. But at some point, you have to trust these really smart people that have been to meeting after meeting after meeting with the folks from Ride, and which receive the advice from Ride, you know, the very upfront, in-your-face, listen, do this to get that, and we're bringing that to you. And it's my impression that if we lose the opportunity for the sixteen million, it's gone, it's off the table, that thirty-five percent that we could get in the future. Doesn't mean we're going to do it, and that CIP that you voted on went line by line by line through, that's still very valid. And that's, that's what's driving me right now, you know, the projects on that list. These two gymnasiums, they're in the far future. We know that CIP is valid and in place and in front of us right now. Sixteen million, again, just a placeholder. That's my take.
Thank you, Chris.
Other discussion on this? I am apt to support it, just because I understand, and I never want us to be in a place that in four or five years, we regret not doing it. And I also think, you know, for having, being able to get the buildings to a place potentially, and I know it won't likely happen in this go-around, but just to be able to have that placeholder, if we are able to do it, to get the elementary schools to all be the same, I think that's important. And also, the students that we're talking about, especially, is fishing?
Oh, Wickford.
Does, well, it's split. It's split.
Split.
Yeah, so there is impact to the students that will be going to Davisville Middle School. Like, it's not the same kids, but like, the families and the areas, like, being able to put some things into those schools to make them similar to the other elementary schools, especially when those communities are going to be going to the older middle school. Like, I do think that that's a good thing to earmark, even though the likelihood of us being able to accomplish it might be low due to inflation and different things. But I do think it's important, and I trust that if Ride and the administration's telling us that that's the direction that we should go in. And Jen, I respect, like, the big decision piece, but I also want to make sure that we're maximizing the reimbursement potential over the next five years. So I am a yes currently. Other discussion? Okay, hearing that, I'm going to call the question, all those in favor of approving the request to increase the submission by sixteen million dollars, please say aye.
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 Okay, opposed?
No.
No, okay, motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda that we need to vote on is the second question, which was to increase the capacity of Wickford Middle School for potential increased reimbursements that could potentially equal ten million dollars for the Wickford Middle School site from four hundred estimated students to five twenty-five. Can I get a motion for that?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Jerry can have that one.
Jerry can have that one.
Although it was probably a tie. Okay, so opening discussion on that one?
I mean, to me, it's, it's kind of the same topic that we're doing it to maximize the reimbursement, to make sure that we get the full reimbursement. If, you know, and I support the recommendation from the administration and from the Ride to do this. I know that the utilization of the building may be very different once the building is built. But, you know, I think anything we can do to make sure that we are getting that reimbursement and the bang for the buck, I guess, for the taxpayers of the town, I think we should do. So I will vote in support of this.
Ken, one question I had, just thought of. I know tomorrow, we're backwards with the building advisory and this meeting, but did the principal of the middle school get, like, was he in discussion with this?
The principals, both middle schools are very involved in this.
Okay, thank you.
Because we hadn't looked at capacity and schedules.
Yep.
They were part of all of the meetings we had.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing that, I'm going to call the question, all those in favor of approving the motion to increase the capacity to five twenty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to the next agenda item, we're going back to school budget. Is there anything else you want to add? I don't know, I was just looking. Yeah, it looks to.
C also, and C first, just in case it does opt in.
Oh, yeah, that's the.
C.
B agreement?
Maybe move up A and C.
Oh, new business C.
Oh, no, new business.
Oh, got you. So you want to move?
A and C.
Do C first in that thing?
Yeah, okay, so can I get a motion for that?
I will make a motion to new business C and A, but do C before A.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it looks like we're going to take under new business C first. This is a B agreement proposed by Attorney Adams, can I get a motion for approval?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then item A, can I get a motion to discuss?
Can you motion to discuss?
Second.
Okay, we'll turn that over to Dr. Duba.
So this is on the agenda tonight, because we were asked to look and do an analysis to see what the cost would be to bring our custodial services back in-house. This is something we started looking at last year when Chris came on board as our new director. I shared that task with him as well, and he has been gathering data, working along with Leslie. And we have a short presentation tonight to show you that cost analysis of what the cost would be for the district if we were to bring custodial services back in-house. You're welcome.
Good evening. Short and sweet, this is a cost estimate to resume custodial services in-house. As you know, right now, ABM are our current custodial providers in all our school buildings. And as Kenny said, we did a short financial analysis of what it would take to bring those services back in-house. The most primary costs, salary and benefits for the custodians. We did an analysis of, first, the salary. We took the highest in the state and a cross-section from the lowest to the highest salaries of custodial workers in the state, the highest being Barrington and East Providence, and some in the middle and some at the lowest. And a fair, livable wage salary we agreed upon is twenty-one dollars and eleven cents an hour. That was an average of those, of those rates of pay. That came out to forty-three thousand dollars, nine hundred and nine. Add to that fringe benefits that Leslie helped me with, and we'd see these values right here, coming for a grand total of seventy-seven thousand dollars per employee, per year. That's number one in our summary. Number two is the recommended number of custodians to staff our schools. Currently, ABM staffs thirty-one individuals to clean our schools. My experience, my analysis over the last five months tells me we need closer to thirty-five people to adequately clean our schools. That's just from a person per square foot. And there's formulas that certain industry specialists use to figure that out, and it's within that. You know, how many rooms, how many linear feet of hallway, how many offices, how many bathrooms? So it all comes together for a recommendation of a per custodian per building. So we are going with thirty-five FTEs to clean our district. The startup cost is number three, we have to purchase new equipment, because right now, ABM owns all the equipment that we have. That is the ride-on scrubbers, the walk-behind scrubbers, everything that's listed there, the carpet cleaners, the water extractors, the vacuums, power washers, big fans, floor fans, all that equipment. It would take about four hundred and twelve thousand dollars to fully outfit the school district with the amount of machines we need. That number was actually put together by my predecessor prior to his exit with a company called NextGen, who are a, I believe, a nationwide, if not worldwide, janitorial supply company. So I have worked with NextGen when, at my previous job, and they are a reputable and forthright company, and I trust that number. Number four in our analysis is the tangible costs for things, consumables, that is trash bags, hand towels, paper towels, hand sanitizer, hand soap, everything that we use on a daily basis. To outfit originally, that would cost the district about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in that first year. Uniforms come in at five thousand dollars, that's how we want our custodians, like ABM right now, actually, to be labeled, so people can recognize them. You know, we want a bit of pride in the fact that we, of the job we do. Equipment repair and preventive maintenance costs, too, all the stuff that is in number three, is very important as well. Those machines get used a lot, and subsequently, they break, they need maintenance. So that cost comes in at about forty-five thousand dollars for the year. Total tangible costs for the first year, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Number five is the additional cost considerations. Now, these are a bit more broad-based estimates. Overtime, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that has to do with paying for snow removal, for athletic contests, for the rec leagues that we host in most all our schools. Custodians have to be there every day, every weekend, whenever there is an event of that nature. Also for dances, for robotics competitions, whatever it is, whatever happens in our schools is tended to by the custodians. So even though a hundred and fifty thousand in overtime may sound like a lot, it's a reasonable estimate, in my opinion. Substitute custodians, when a custodian's on vacation or happens to call in sick, we can't just say, oop, that part of the school's not getting cleaned. We have to have somebody to back that person up, and to do that would cost money as well. That total cost is coming in at about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars as our estimate. In summary, the anticipated first-year cost for startup, three million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Okay, that's, that is from one, three, four, and five, the addition of those four sections. The addition of those four sections. Anticipated subsequent year, that is simply three million, five sixty-two minus the four hundred and twelve thousand dollars of the mechanical startup fee costs brings us to three point one million. Current ABM budget for this year is one point eight million. Add to that the settlements, what we call settlements. That's the core employees of ABM that used to be employees of the school district that ABM assumed when they took over the contract. There was an agreement in the contract that they would match the current salary that they were learning, earning when they used to work for the school district as ABM assumed their contract. Add fifty-one thousand of that, and the total ABM budget by year for this year is one point nine million dollars. The difference between the thirty-one, I'm sorry, three million, one hundred and fifty thousand and the, where'd it go, where'd it go? The one point nine million is one point six five eight million dollars. That's what we're talking about annually moving forward to assume in-house custodial services.
Thank you. Questions from the committee?
Isaiah, when did we, when did the switch happen? I was just curious.
Two thousand and twelve.
Are all of our custodians through ABM, or do we have any of the thirty-one?
None, they're one hundred percent ABM employees.
Okay. So then, would there be the opportunity, like, I know some of them have been working here for such a long time, and, you know, they have such a good rapport with the kids and everything. Would they, I mean, obviously, it would be up to them, but would they have the opportunity to stay with us?
Actually, there's a stipulation in the ABM contract that they prevent us from doing that.
Like, I don't compete.
Correct.
What about the unionized one, the staff that we are currently paying the settlements to? Does that, there's nothing, because it's a weird, because there's, some of them are, I don't know if all of the employees are in the...
We have, we have, so.
The unions and, I'm sorry, let me just finish my thought again. The, some of, are all the employees in the union or some of the employees in the union?
It's my belief that all the employees, it's my belief that all the employees employed by ABM on-site are in the union. With the exception of the substitute custodians that may have to be called on in the event of a sickness or a vacation fill-in, something like that.
We do have a handful of our current custodians who are the, some of the original custodians buyer to us not, us going with the outside agents.
But then, if we switch back, they couldn't come back to us if they.
I, you know what?
We have to, I think we have to look at that and see.
Okay.
Okay. How much do the employees make? You you came up with a fair wage of twenty-one, whatever. How much do they make working for ABM?
It's my belief, and this is second-hand information, but it comes from ABM employees, between fifteen and sixteen dollars an hour.
It's a huge difference.
Yeah.
Well, I think that therein lies part of the challenge ABM has in obtaining consistent staffing. I know one of the consistent challenges that they have is the amount of turnover they have and the the ability to get people through the door.
I just, to your point, I can say something, like, I heard you specifically say that the rate that you used was based on a living wage, right? So if that's based on a living wage, what they're currently being paid is not. Not to put you on the spot, I'm just.
That is a matter of personal opinion, that's a matter of personal opinion. I would find it near impossible to live on fifteen dollars an hour to to afford a car, insurance, healthcare, feed a family, put a roof over it.
These are the people, you know, I I don't know all of them, but I've been in a lot of the schools, and they are the ones who are, like, literally, like, in there every day, keeping the school clean, keeping the school, like, they go out of their way to make sure things are, I just, that's unfortunate.
So Chris, you did, you did, a fair dish of others, so good job to to both of you with the going through it.
Thank you.
But we didn't do, it's not apples to apples, though, and so did you do what the apples to apples would be? So what I mean by that is you you think we need thirty-five employees, what would thirty-one cost? You think we should pay them twenty-one and change, what would sixteen cost? Like, you know, like, where you you made the ideal situation if we brought it in-house, not the current situation if we brought it in-house. And so I would be curious at a at a future conversation to know what that number is like. Not that I'm saying that that's what we should do, but like, this number is inflated because you made it the ideal.
Gotcha.
Not the actual.
I'd be happy to provide that number for you.
And again, not that I think what you presented is completely legitimate, but I'd just be curious what the apples to apples is.
Jen, too, that the overtime, aren't we billing most of that back out? Or some, at least a portion of it?
A portion.
Yeah, because some of it's us.
Right, like, if it's our robotics thing, but if it's.
Could we split that number up, too? Because that is a, in theory, misleading number, because if the, because the way that the policy is written, you know, obviously, we give nonprofits the the space for free, but they do, they are responsible for the custodial overtime costs and are getting billed that. And so could we split out what the hundred and fifty is, how much of that we actually pay, and how much is getting paid by the NK Choir and all of those sort of things?
Well, you mean, oh, like, okay, outside entities, non, nonprofit outside, say, a bodybuilding or a dance competition or whomever.
No, the nonprofits pay that, too, as well.
Even the PTOs do.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, everybody pays the fee.
Except us, like, the internals.
School-based, school-based teams and organizations do not pay.
Because the PTO had to pay if there wasn't a custodian there, we got billed.
PTO's not in-house. You're all external, like, in theory, you're not.
Oh, all right, but I mean, like, what I'm saying is, like, it's still part of the school, it was a school event, and if it was on the weekend, they had, we had to pay for it.
It's a PTO, it's a.
Because it's a PTO, like, if Chris decided he wanted to have a dodgeball tournament and Chris rented it, he wouldn't have to pay for it, but the PTO.
Even though it's the kids in the school.
It's a nonprofit.
But, yeah, so I think it's a lot more than.
Yeah, so let's, if we could get that, that would be helpful, just to have a, like, I just want a really solid number of, like, the the actual.
Okay, I can tighten that.
Any other questions?
So I'm going to put, just to be clear, I'm going to come back with, say, fifteen, fifty an hour and thirty-one employees.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the overtime split about what the district actually pays versus what external entities are paying.
Okay.
Leslie can talk.
I was in charge. Throw it up.
Yes, please.
So just one, oh, Chris, really?
Let's just be realistic here. So one thing that I would recommend if we're going to do that representation is just from looking at other districts that do have, like, there were some districts that do have that rate, their substitute cost was significantly higher because they have a very hard time.
Yep, so you should.
So I will, I'm going to increase that, so just so you know, that's going to be my rationale for that number being different.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
And again, I just, I just want to, like, I understand what you're doing here, I just want to understand that, that is, but. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have, I just have one more question, quick question about timeline. You know, once you come back to us with all this information, is there any specific timeline? You know how we have, like, fiscal year or end of school year? I mean, from your perspective, for this decision to be made, what would maybe be the most beneficial timeline?
It would have to do with time of year, you know, is it right after school ends, is it after the summer ends? And also, we have to look at the contract, there's a ninety-day clause in there.
Okay.
If ABM wants to leave us, they have to give us ninety days, vice versa, we have to give them ninety days. So those two components would contribute to that decision.
Yeah, and just to clarify for the committee, this investigation didn't come from the committee, it came from NEA. And they asked us to consider the the concept, so I just want to be really clear that the committee didn't go out and ask for this information, we were asked to look at this.
It resulted from a meeting with the union, NEA union for the custodians, coming from them, you know, so what would it be if you brought it back in-house?
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah, so just to clarify, like, of why we're investigating and what we're looking into. And I also know there's some ABM employees here, and I did want to thank them for the hard work that that they do for our students every day. It's not personal, it's just looking at, you know, the cost in the business, so I appreciate all that you do, so I just wanted to note that.
I just want to add one thing, too, and I just want to make sure that this conversation that we're having, because we are talking about the NEA members, and that it has no results on them with ABM that we're pursuing this. I just want to make sure they're protected, that this conversation does not go back against them.
And we're perfectly noticed.
If I may.
The company.
Yes. Stephanie Barnes is the Regional Operations Manager. All right, Stephanie? And Renzo Rueda is our area manager, Account Manager, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we'll, we'll do some mixed ups, and then to Megan, to your point, talk to Ken about timeline. And again, we're not, we just were exploring what it could look like in the concept of what we might want to do long-term. So that is exactly what we're looking for at this point, so thank you.
Thank you.
Be back.
Okay. Okay, so that one's all set.
One more that I just have to get done tonight, if possible, is is the eighty-three, the first one.
Yes.
Get frustrated on that.
Can you make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion because I'm going to break.
Second. Okay, Jen, do you want to just explain that, please?
Yep, so I am going to explain it right now. So this is the first read of revisions to an existing policy, which was updated to remove the date and place of birth from the directory information, because directory information can be disclosed to third parties without parental permission or student permission. So we will see this policy one more time before voting on it.
Any questions regarding that?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. And so we'll see that at the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay. So we will. Do I do anything else time-sensitive wise? I think I can push, not not that, I'm assuming the budget will push up. I think everything else is fine for. If it, if it has to get tabled, correct. I know the school committee meeting dates, we have a timeline on that, but we, with the the other meeting, we can throw that on for that one. Sound good? All right. Okay, so we'll move to A one, which is budget.
Just one on that, new business.
We need first read.
B has a budgetary component, so I don't know if we want to address that.
Which one?
The DEI Advisory Committee recommendation, because that has a budgetary impact.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion to do that one before the budget, then?
Yep, I will make a motion to move up new business B.
Second.
So this is priority recommendation number one from the equity audit was to set a clear vision and common language for equity across the district. Part of that included creating a equity vision statement, which administration worked very long and hard on with various stakeholders. So in September, we actually approved the equity vision statement, but the next recommendation, once it's been approved, is to actually adopt it and publicize the vision. Right now, it's just a piece of paper. And so the recommendation was to place the equity vision statement front and center throughout the district and, you know, place it in public places, including on the website, every school, the district office, and on communications material in multiple languages. That was the recommendation out of the audit. So the DEI committee has spent time, several meetings, discussing the most effective ways to disseminate the statement. And the recommendation, official recommendation from the DEI Advisory Committee is that the school committee initiate the rollout of the equity vision statement in this spring of twenty twenty-five with two additional phases planned for fall and spring. For the initial phase, we would target the internal school committee, and for that, the school committee should encourage and support the creation of a web presence, a promotional video, email communications, branded stickers, and a creative competition with awards. To support this, the DEI Advisory Committee is recommending allocating three thousand dollars from the fiscal year twenty-five budget with plans to incorporate additional funding in the fiscal year twenty-six budget made by Rob Mazinoff.
Can I ask a question? Why are we doing all of that when we don't do that with our mission statement or our vision? I'm just curious, like, we, so we have an equity vision, but we're going to put it on stickers, we're going to do promotional videos, but we don't do that with other mission statements that we have? Just curious.
It could.
It could, but I'm just wondering why we're doing so much for that, when we don't, just our district mission, our vision, we're not doing the same.
The recommendation was because we have a problem with equity, right? So we have adopted this equity vision statement to say that equity is something that is important to us, and it's not important if we don't do anything about it.
Just, I'm just wondering, you know, because now we're putting budgetary money towards that, and we're not doing the same with some other things, so. If we're going to talk about equity, why, like, why is that being highlighted so much versus, I'm not against the equity statement, I'm just, it's the process that I'm questioning.
Priority number one was to roll, adapt it and roll it out and make it, you know, something that we actually, but, no, I'm not going to say.
I think, I think when, with with the committee's conversation regarding this, and and Rob gave him something, one of their big things that they were doing in creating this is that they didn't just want it to be performative, and they didn't just want it to get done and say, okay, checkbox, like, we did this, and so I think they're asking for the committee and and the administration to allocate a tiny amount of money, three thousand dollars, to just putting a little bit of support for printing and and things like that behind getting the the word out. And Sally had some thoughts and plans on, like, the kickoff at the March PD with the the teachers, et cetera. And I think the Advisory Committee was fairly thoughtful on, like, how slowly it was, like, first starting with the internal community and then moving forward. And so I don't disagree with you, Ken, that we we shouldn't have those other things out there, like, but I think.
I just think it should get tied in, right? So if we're going to be putting something together with the equity, I think it should also, like, put our mission, I'm just saying.
But that waters down the whole purpose of doing an equity statement and saying, like, we own this, like, equity is important to us, and we want to put it out there, right? Like, if you were attaching it.
I disagree that it watered it down, I'm just thinking that it's a connection to the mission, the the mission statement that we have for the district, and if we're going to be putting promotional videos together, just tie it together, that's all I'm saying. I think if we're doing that, just looking at how it relates to the the mission that we have and connecting it.
Well, because then it's like, I agree with you, Dr. Duba, like, it's like one statement together where this big community, we all want to support it.
Saying, like.
Versus being.
Tying it together.
Rob, you want to chime in here?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that obviously, it's it's a very important statement. I I see where Dr. Duba's coming from, it is fit into the larger picture. I know that we've done a lot of good work in the DEI committee to have this, these conversations and to talk about the importance of it. I think that really, we we know how important equity is. It's a very important issue, it's a, it's a critical issue that we we all agree to. And it's something that's certainly deserving of attention, but I also, I I can see Dr. Duba's point as well, that it is part, it is part of our district mission. It is part of our overall district mission, and what we are, what we intend to do, what we what we intend to create, the sort of opportunities and the and the and the support for all students is tied critically to our overall mission.
I'm just saying, I think it should be connected, I'm not, I support the equity vision statement, I support what you're saying, I just think it should be connected if we're going to be putting promotional materials out there, that we should have a connection to when our district mission statement is our vision and that.
Ideally, we revise our mission statement to reflect equity, because right now, it doesn't.
Okay, so the recommendation, Jen, can you just restate the recommendation from the committee?
For three thousand dollars from this year's budget, and then with additional funding for twenty twenty-six to come to, for the two second phase rollouts from it.
Yep. So there, this, the three thousand dollars would be from the fiscal year budget that we had already approved last year using money that could be available, like, if there's money available, that's the current request. Okay.
Do you have examples of stuff you guys think, like, do you want to just send out the vision? Or, like, I was thinking, too, like, something more, not catchy, do you know what I mean? Like, if someone's going to read the whole thing, or, you know?
We have, like, a whole bunch of ideas, plans, like, to do, like, a thing with kids, like, a rolling thing, like, you know, I belong, and this is what equity is to me. Like, things like that, and like, do, we have a whole list of stuff that we worked on in the DEI Advisory Committee.
But again, the Advisory Committee is advising the school committee, and the school committee wouldn't implement the the recommendations from the Advisory Committee, the administration would do that, and so that's working with.
So it's really, we're just approving the money?
The money, yeah.
It's honestly, I don't even know, technically, we have to approve the money because we approved the budget, and so it's more.
It was already in the budget.
Approving the recommendation to, you know what I mean?
To take three thousand dollars of the budget, yes.
Yep. Thoughts on that, Ken?
Yeah, I, I already said kind of where I'm at, my my suggestion is just connecting it with the mission and the vision. If we're going to be doing promotional videos, that the three are both part of the promotions that, like, you're saying about having kids come in and showing about what that means to them, I think that's a great idea. I just, I'm just saying, I think it should be connected to what we have, of putting that out there.
So do you need the school committee to vote on allocating three thousand dollars from the current fiscal budget to do, to get the equity vision and out to the community? Or is that something that is just in, like, that you can, because once the school committee approves a budget, the administration can move things around, et cetera, do you think that you have three thousand dollars to fund some of those things this spring?
I would ask, I didn't know that, that we were looking at, I I didn't know we were looking at having to take a vote tonight that had a dollar amount on it?
I sent it to you, that that was what the recommendation was, that I was going to be asking for money tonight.
I did not see that, and that was not in the agenda, went to the agenda, so I'm just saying, it wasn't, it wasn't there, I mean.
I mean, the, it is.
I mean, I'm not trying to push back on this, I'm just saying, like, it was not.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Was there any discussion while you were looking at what you wanted to spend, where, knowing that the budget was fully allocated and that we had a balanced budget, was there any discussion by the committee on where you thought there were funds that could be drawn on? So was there PD money that was discussed? Was was there anything in particular that you did discuss, just so I have a starting place to go look?
Just the money, yeah.
Okay. So what I would like to do, if it's possible, is I'd just like to do a review, and then I can put together a memo for the committee of just what my recommendation would be of where we would do that. I mean, the chairperson is is correct, like, we can do budget transfers and. I mean, the chairperson is, is correct, like, we can do budget transfers and move within, within the district, but knowing that it's going to be taken from something that was already allocated, I just want to make sure that all parties involved are okay with that move and that the school committee is okay with that. So if that's okay, I'd like to be able to do that.
That sounds reasonable to me, but also, some of the things, and again, this, Rob, like, would have a list of kind of, from the administrative lens of, because again, this would be administratively, what's our working board?
Implemented.
Thank you. Has the list, but like, it could also be, like, if something's printing, like, there might be money after printing.
Exactly.
So it's not necessarily taking it from one thing and moving it to another, it could be just saying, yes, we do have enough in printing to do the idea that they had.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So that's what, that's, I think, what we're just looking for, but also knowing that it is a mid-cycle budget impact, we wanted to, I think, discuss it, so.
Sure, yeah, and that's exactly right, like...
Sounds like we can get some follow-up from the administration?
Yep.
I can, I can put that together, and then I'll...
Yeah, I just, I just did a search of my email, I did not see that email, so I apologize. I didn't see the email, it was in here.
Do you have it now?
Yeah, I just, I put your name and searched for exactly that.
There it is, yeah.
So I'm just saying, it wasn't, I did not see the email, and it wasn't as attached from here with the agenda, I didn't know what it was for, so.
Okay.
Okay, so no action needed on that at this moment?
Just to note the second part of that, with additional funding for next year.
Yep, so, let's get to the budget, 25, 26 budget, Ken Leslie, et cetera. Thank you, Victor.
So excited to do it.
Budget, right?
And before we get started, Dr. Doova did reach out to the town manager, and then we did get, we do have, all five of us can make it on the Monday, the 24th, for a final budget conversation and approval, so thank you for the members for being willing to do that. And so it is 9:43, and so we are going to do some, but also because we approved that meeting, we'll still be in compliance with getting it to the town due to the conversation that, that Ken had with Mr. Wallace. So just, we can keep that in mind as far as time spent, et cetera.
So I would say in the interest of time, like, I, did everybody read the budget presentation? Because I think you going through it page by page is not an efficient use of time.
I'm fine with that, absolutely fine with it.
Okay, and that's just my, I don't know, how anybody else feels? Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with just kind of explaining the changes, what I did, kind of the recommendation within the presentation.
Yep.
And then if anyone has any questions based on the new stuff, I'm happy to go through.
You don't have, the presentation was the one sent out yesterday, right?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
But we don't have it printed, right?
Um, yeah, no, it should be printed, okay.
That's, that's the actual budget.
No, not the presentation.
So we didn't even have time to...
That's what I, I just, I'll go find it, I just, it was a very honest 9:44 question of, do I have this piece of paper in front of me? I'll just look it up now, worries. I mean, go ahead, that's the...
Okay, so one of the, the main things to note, so I did a very deep dive, I looked at all of the questions that came out of the first budget meeting and the second budget meeting in terms of discussion items that were things that were tangible, that we could actually look at, that we can make adjustments in the budget. So I know that in both of those workshops, we had a lot of questions, just, like, theoretical things, like, could we do this with quotas? And those are things that we're obviously going to have to do audits on and we're going to have to investigate. So for the purposes of the fiscal 26 budget and what we did to present tonight is to really look at how we could make some changes to get the budget within the realm of what we originally presented to the town, to try and accommodate some of the discussion items we had, things that we thought were areas of improvement, things that were important, talk about the positions that were presented to us from the different administrators at the different schools, all with, trying to stay within a realistic and being fiscally responsible with our budget. So that is what you all received yesterday, was that update. Some of the key things that I would point out was I took a very, very deep dive on that stipend section. So I would say in terms of salaries and benefits, that's the area where I made the most changes. I actually did a five-year look, so when I knew the budget, obviously you can see, we did fiscal '23, fiscal '24, that's where I started. So draft one was looking at the immediate timeframe, and I just went as far back as I could get information to really see what our utilization is, what patterns might be, maybe we're booking things differently. The reality is, we've had different people within this position who do things differently, and I wanted to make sure I had a full picture, and I was able to make some considerable, considerable adjustments there that I think will, that certainly helped the budget, but I still think will keep us within what our spend has been in those certain areas. So we, I looked at the stipends, the severance, some of the payout, some of the contractual obligations to see what are we actually responsible for, why and how we've been budgeting the way we have. So that, I would say that's one of the, the main things differences you'll see in terms of salary. I did make some adjustments to how transportation is listed in the budget, but overall, the amount of money that is in there is the same. I did this because during our previous conversation, we had some questions as to why our statewide budgeting seemed very off. End result, it was how different people have been allocating that using UCOA in our system. And again, that just, I think, is because we've had some turnover in the position, so I went through and I did like an apples-to-apples comparison, I looked, I went to 22, 23, 24, and 25, and did it all manually to get to where we are so that I can be much more confident in the numbers that we have for the transportation piece. So that was another significant change. The next piece was, I went through and I pulled out all of the items that I thought we could realistically use some of those fund balance reserves that we have from the operating surplus that we had in fiscal year '24. So on the presentation, I don't know if you want to just flip to that slide, just so they don't want to misspeak, items that we talked about were the technology, the capital pieces, that are not necessarily items that we're going to need every year, so having them in our operational budget is not something that we, you know, like, the DX rail, and then I did take for this budget year, I did take the Chromebooks out, and my recommendation is to use fund balance, but with the understanding that we need to start planning for the future with what we do and how we accommodate that, because we cannot continue to do that. It's not a good idea to do that year-over-year. So took a considerable amount of money out of the technology budget. One of my other recommendations would be to, we do have those two mini buses that we've purchased, we have the opportunity to, there is a lease payment built into this budget, we could pull that lease payment out, we have enough money that we could pay for those buses in full, we would save considerable money on interest.
Is it in the version that we got last night, the lease payment is still in there?
The lease payment, the lease payment is still in there.
And how much is that?
Um, right now, it is 30, the payment for fiscal year '26 is $36,000.
Okay, so 36,000.
So there's $36,000 that could come out. But I did want, I did put that as an option, we, we have not entered into the lease agreement yet, they've been good enough to wait till we decide what we want to do with the budget, so we don't have any prepayment penalties or anything like that. Some of the other items that were in the budget were the security cameras on the buses. There was a scissor lift that we had talked about for facilities that we need to purchase. We spend about $25,000 a year on rentals just to change the light bulbs at the high school. So having this one-time purchase for the same amount of money would, would save us money in the long run. And then there were some additional, like, smaller items that would, that were in the budget that would fit within some of those allocations that we had talked about, that prior school committees had said that they had wanted, if we ever had surplus. So those, those I pulled out of this budget so that overall, when we're looking at it, we, it got us to a percentage below that 3.9 that we had presented to the town. The final piece, after I pulled everything out, we had some very, like, very long and intense conversations with the positions that were requested, and in, you know, meeting with Dr. Santa and talking about, like, the true needs, we discussed ways that we could potentially, without increasing the FTEs, we could add the two special educators that are needed for next year, and then we would, we are recommending in that budget to increase by three FTEs on the ESP for TAs, to go with those two special educators. And that is currently in this budget. All told, with those changes, it brings us to a 3.8% increase from prior year.
Wow.
Good for you, Leslie.
Where is the, where are the two regular teacher education positions being?
So do you want to...
So if I go back to slide one, based on the recommendation that, let me bring to the reconfiguration committee meeting next, well, in two weeks, with doing some redistricting and moving students from Hamilton to Fish and Cove and Fish and Cove to Quidditch, I do believe, based on projections and number of teachers in classrooms, we won't need as many classroom teachers, and the funding for those positions can be transferred to the special education positions that we need.
And, sorry, where are the special ed positions going to be?
So we need to add an intensive resource position to Whitford Middle School and a positive pathways kindergarten program at Fish and Cove, and that's based on student needs and the current population from preschool that's moving up for kindergarten, and then elementary students moving up, moving to middle school that need an intensive resource program, that would be a good thing.
And the two teaching assistants, there would be two teaching assistants that would be assigned to that new positive pathways class, and one that would be assigned to the intensive resource.
And where would the other one go? Oh, two and one, sorry.
There's two, two and one, nope.
So one of the questions that I had asked was for, like, what our current mental health staffing is, because I know that one of the requests was for additional positions for that.
Yes.
And so obviously that wasn't identified, but I am curious to know where we are at in terms of staffing per building.
And like the ratios and all that?
And the ratio.
And, and Dr. Santa and I, we did, we did briefly talk about that, we went through the other requests, so specifically for, we had some requests for an extra psychologist and an extra social worker, and in our conversations, there were, I don't want to use the word alternatives, because that's, that's not the right way to describe it.
Other options.
There were other options without having to add staff, and, and I love her to be able to discuss, to be able to, to fill some of those voids with...
I still like the information regardless of that, yeah, thank you.
I can't give you the ratios, but I can say that, do we need more mental health staff? Yes, so, but when you're looking at a list of all the needs of what we need to add in for phases in front of kids with significant issues, that, that, those are the ones that are prioritized. So it was prioritized, I need to make sure that my intensive resource kids are sixth grade going to seventh and eighth grade, the kids coming in all have the ports that they require, and that our very extremely needy preschool has spots in placements for, for K. So I don't want to say that I'm saying that mental health is not needed, I would say it is, except for these other positions took precedence over, like, first day of school, I have these kids in front of me, that type of a thing.
I, I'm not questioning that, I just am trying to find out what our current, and I've been asking for this a few minutes, the budget was put in front of us, so if I could just...
I have never been asked this, so...
I know you haven't, but it's been communicated, so I'm not questioning your ask.
So, I mean, we did increase this past year...
I, I, it's on me.
Okay, it's okay, I just...
No, and I'm not looking for you to justify it.
I can't give you a ratio, I can tell you that we've increased this year, like, additional social worker and things like that, so.
That reached the question.
So we did increase this past year, we increased with those two social workers, so that we have a full-time person at DMS and things like that. I can get you the ratios and whatever information is wanted, send out to you.
As you're part of one of the, I just wanted to, we, we received a lot of questions, we're trying to get through all the questions, on top of the budget, on top of other things, it's not that we don't want to give you the info, it's just...
But this ties into it, because what if we decided that we wanted to cut another $400,000 out of the budget and put mental health positions in, that's why I'm saying...
No, no, I, I completely understand that.
Yeah, I understand, it was on, it was, it was requested. However, I will say that we're signed up to get interns from, an intern or interns from REC, that paperwork was signed this week, potential, and then what they kind of do is a speed dating, where you go up and you get to meet lots of interns, and our staff will choose who they want, that's with the understanding that our staff would be, would be willing to supervise. And I've had requests from schools outside of Rhode Island to do internships here, so we may be able to get some additional support. This year, we did have an intern, there's an intern at the high school that has added that extra support, especially with testing and other things that need to get done by a school psychologist, and we also can look at whether or not we can get one or two more interns this coming year. So that is, I wouldn't say it's a replacement, but it does add additional support, and people that are eager to learn and takes things like testing off a school psychologist's plate and allows them to do more activities within the building. As far as additional information, if I get a list, I'll put that together for you.
So we, this year, we added a K teacher, correct?
Yeah, the...
The Compass K.
We added Compass K program, and we...
And we added a regular K classroom.
Yep, so we added two FTEs in that area? So, because we have five Ks at Stony, right?
Well, Compass K has three, four teachers.
The K is, that's a special, special program.
No, it doesn't have Compass K.
Yeah.
Compass K has one teacher and several aides, two aides.
Oh, okay, thank you, I'm trying, I'm trying to think of...
You're thinking of the whole Compass program, the other children have to...
What I was, what I was curious about is, we added that for, for that age group, kind of like, we haven't seen the, like, last year you presented, like, the staffing and, like, how it shifted, you know, like, with the grades moving and different things, and so I wasn't sure, I, I'm pretty sure we added an FTE in that zone, and so I was curious kind of where that was going.
Right, we added, so we added a kindergarten teacher last year, regular K, right, that we did certainly, and then the Compass K program that came in after this.
Much more severe kids.
Yeah.
I think the dilemma that we're having is the number, typically this time of year for our preschool, we're concerned about maybe five or six kids kindergarten placements in front of preschool coming up. We now have 30 kids that we're concerned about placements are coming up, so I need to have multiple options of how we're going to service kids. And there's a very large proportional kids needing significant behavioral intervention, and that's what the request for positive pathways K is for. So with the addition of positive pathway Ks, I, it gives me many more options for really looking and honing in between now and the end of the school year, each one of the students and determining what the best amount of programming is for them. That includes inclusion kindergarten, being in a regular kindergarten classroom with additional support, it adds, the Compass K is more severe, I can add back K to Hamilton to add another option as those positive pathways K, so that's the thinking behind that, giving us continuum options.
So we have data to show that we need to maintain that extra K teacher that we have.
So right now with our projections, we need to keep 14 Ks.
All right, that's...
Be unable to, hold on a minute.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Gotcha.
At least, I mean, I can say as of today...
Yeah, and I know K is a, a moving target, if you will, for, for registrations, but, so you believe we need 14 Ks?
And that is typically something we get, is like the staffing as part of the budget presentation, and we did not get that, so it is kind of hard to see, like, where all the things are. It is 9:59, so I'm going to make a motion to extend.
Do you want to be specific about it?
I have to be specific about it.
You don't, do you, I don't have to be happy, but you could.
I think we have to.
You could.
I'm going to make a motion to extend to 10:30.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
Let's do it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Dr. Santa, I have a quick question for you, because it's budget-related.
I'm starting to go backwards.
The, the kindergarten Compass K kids over at Stony.
Yes.
I've always been curious about where they go, graduate to next year.
That's a great question, so, well, you have to understand that it's not a direct line, it's not like they go for Compass K and then immediately they're going to this other program. It's really about three different avenues right now we're looking at for those kiddos. We have some that are integrated into kindergarten and are doing.
Sorry, does that interest of time, does that budget impact?
Yeah, because if, I'm just wondering if we need to add more teachers.
Fantastic job.
Going into first grade or the next level.
No, so we have some kids that were gonna be integrated right into kindergarten, going to first grade. We have some kids that will need to follow the compass continuum and go to first grade over at Hamilton. And then there, there is some conversation about some kids potentially doing another round in Compass K.
Okay, thank you.
But that staffing wise, that's.
I'm, I'm okay. If I can add positive pathways K, that's my highest priority. That was my number one thing. Then I'm able to have a full continuum and choices for the students that are coming up to K that we're extremely concerned about.
Can I ask a question? Just if, if, if you have, just to give me an idea of what you're looking for.
Davisville, point four, Whitford, point six.
Okay.
Hamilton.
In terms of what we're adding or what we have total?
What exists.
Got it. I just want to make sure I can get you that ASAP.
Yeah, that's easy.
Other questions regarding, so it sounded, other questions regarding the budget?
Okay, I have many, but I, I just, about the positions, right? So there were, I'm trying to find my, the initial list had a bazillion on them. And so understanding that you prioritize, right? Like I, I hear that there is a, like the kids exist for this, you know, the compass and all that stuff. But like if that was not the case, what would have been the next thing on the list?
Um, I'm trying to think, my third priority, I believe my third priority was a school psychologist and my fourth was project search.
Okay. And this is no disrespect to you, but who else might have a priority?
Per staff.
Per staff. Who's not up here speaking and.
Intervention. I know, I know there was other parties for intervention, things like that.
Some of it was to increase intervention. I would not recommend increasing any of the interventionists at this time, because it was due a point two here. My recommendation is, is that we need to sit down with the interventionist, find out what's working, what's not working. Because if you're gonna start increasing, then you should be increasing interventions like in full-time positions, not just a percentage of time.
And there were, and there were any requests from the principals for like additional TAs or additional staff for specials or additional.
I think rec, the recognition for TAs were at Hamilton on the list.
But we're not, but you don't think that that's needed?
As far as like other areas of it was in need, that was not at the very top of the priority list.
And that was based on their.
I'm not saying it's not needed, I'm just saying priority was.
Yep. And that was based on their increase in role, like the size of.
Right. So based on how many students are in the building.
And if there's any redistricting, that some of that might shift.
Looking at redistricting, it would actually be having less classrooms.
And it's predominantly during, my understanding is during lunch and recess, that's typically that time of day.
And, and in some of the requests, like for the social worker psychologist, like to Dr. Dubas' point where it says like Stony Lane, Hamilton, Forest Park, it was not, they were not each requesting one.
So it was one extra day.
They wanted, one wanted an extra half a day and one wanted an extra day. So my original thought was, is there a way for us to do this with one and one in the request? And we had originally in our, in one of our plans, we did have the psychologists of high school in there. And then in conversations, we kind of thought that it was more important to have the teaching assistants, because there were ways for us to solve the need with the psychologist, but not a way for us to solve the need with the teaching assistants.
The, the real reality of this is that if I cannot support our preschool kids appropriately for kindergarten, it's gonna end up in added district placements, which will much have a much heavier impact on the budget than us providing a teacher and two 2e's to add to the programming to support those kids. Because at this point, what, what you don't, what you don't necessarily always see are that we have new kids that move in that we're able to support in DA or, or existing programs. We have kids that we have transitioned back. We've had some kids who've had to go out. But we've, we've really have done quite a bit of keeping the kids in district or using our own programming for that. So my concern is if I can't adequately support, we're, we're gonna, these kids will have to go somewhere where we can support them. So when I think of triage and money, that's the biggest, that gives us the biggest impact on working with the kids and saving future savings. Now, you know, do I have, can I do the same exact result with mental health? No, I can't make that exact same correlation as I can with kids that are gonna end up in placement. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah. So that's why those, those took precedence. Not because I don't think there is a need, it's just I have to think about, this is, we only have this amount of money. We can't ask for all the positions. I asked for everything I needed at first, right? And then we started whittling down to what are the priorities? You know, do, do I think project search is a really valuable project? One hundred percent. I think that would add a whole nother aspect for our transition kids. Can we afford it with the need, the greater need of these little guys coming up that we don't have the right placements for?
Other questions on the budget?
So one overriding question, and you kind of answered that Leslie in the document that you sent, but not really, was the cost per, like, cost per student for elementary school.
Okay.
And so like in my mind, right, I think that we're gonna spend, every kid needs four dollars and twenty-two cents worth of supplies for the year, and that's the thing. It should be four twenty-two times the number of kids and each school should get a different, like, that's what they're, it's, the amount is based on other, per kid. Because that should be the same at every school, right?
And yes, to an extent, that is how, how the budget was built. So I, I did it a little differently and it kind of plays into some of the questions about the supply lines and the different specialist areas and things like that.
Because one of the questions that I got was like art at Hamilton. Hamilton is the biggest school, but it has the lowest art line, like.
So it, so it was two-part. So how, what I typically do is for each of those specialist areas, there's like a dollar amount per student that's kind of industry, industry standard that you would say. And I'm just making this up. We'll say it's two dollars and twenty-five cents per student for art. That, and then you do that by the number of students. Then you look at, then we had an actual conversation about that. I said, based on the number of students and what it would be for art, this is what we would allocate in there. Does this make sense for what you've used, what happened? And, and again, I, I don't, I can't speak to what the principal did if they went back and talked to their different people or whatever. But in the conversations we had, it was, does this make sense for you? Do you have a particular need in one area more than you have another because you have an abundance of art supplies that you have right now? And you think you can get by with a little bit less because you really want to allocate that money to music because you haven't bought recorders in three years? Those were the conversations that we had. So we started with, this is a per student for art, this is your two twenty-five, this is the number of students, this is where you would be. It's three dollars for phys ed, it's a dollar thirty-five for music, it's X amount for general supplies. And we went down and then we went through every line kind of systematically and talked about what the need was for fiscal twenty-six. And that's how I arrived at it. So in essence, I could go back and just say, we're allocating it, you know, this, this and this based on the student. And then you've got an exact correlation across all the schools.
I mean, I think the concern is, parents at the schools with higher enrollment want to make sure that their kids are getting the same financial resources at students, at like that, other students are getting at smaller enrolled schools. And so I think, like I totally understand your rationale and I trust the principals in their thing, but I think that's the gist of the question.
It is, and if you look at it, it doesn't look that way.
It doesn't look that way. Okay, yeah.
And, and to like what Megan had brought up the other day, like I am still worried that like the, the music teacher is not asking for paper or the art teacher is not asking for crayons. Like, and that is kind of reflected in what I hear you saying. And I appreciate what you're doing because you have to do it, like what do you need? But I feel like Hamilton should not have, and I'm only picking Hamilton because they have four hundred and fifty kids, less money than quid for art supplies, right? If we are doing it equitably.
Okay.
So I, I just want to make sure that that is.
And I'm, I am happy to, between now and Monday, to go back to each of them and, and go through it again and really make sure that they're comfortable with what we have and that everybody who is involved, the art teacher, music teacher, they're all part of that conversation. I, you know, that's certainly, that's, that's the, at least how I've done in the past, that's how a budget is built. You go through, there's many iterations, you really do those deep dives, and the longer you go through it, the more you really have to go back and, and reexamine it. And if that's something that, if there's a concern, I'm happy to do it. You know, my, my rationale was really looking at what the budget has been year over year and just, it was more of a starting point of let's allocate it to the right places first. Like this is baby steps for us is, historically, it's just been one bucket of money and it all goes there and, and it's, you know, at the principal's discretion on how that money gets digged out, really. That's how it's been done in the past. So at least this way, my thought was, let's start here and make sure that every department has a budget so that they know, starting out, they have this money to spend. It's theirs, you know? And, and so that was, that was more of my focus in just making sure that we did it with the proper allocations first.
Yes.
But I can certainly go back and revisit it just to make sure and that we, we're all comfortable and happy and that everybody feels secure in what they're gonna be having going to the next year. I mean, that's.
Like I think like overall, like for the school, like for the per pupil cost, if one is nine dollars a student and one is eight dollars a student, but the eight dollar student principal says, I can live with eight dollars, then that's okay. But they should both start at nine and then kind of get chipped down.
Do you have, and I apologize if I just didn't see, do you have the Davisville move costs in there? Have you incorporated them?
No. I, I didn't because I didn't get a complete, I haven't received like all that, there's information that's involved in that, the full move, that I don't have all of the pieces.
Okay, but that's something we have to consider.
Right, like other than what we received from, one, one thing I did, let me back, back up. So I had the initial stuff from Chris. There were other discussion items that came when we talked about possible changes to Fish and Cove, things that we have to consider. So that stuff that we're still working on to make sure that we are including everything. One of the things I did do in my plan when I talked about, when we looked at what was the recommended allocations from prior school committees in the fund balance, one of the line items was making sure that there was money allocated to playgrounds. And so one of the things I did was make a recommendation to add an additional twenty-five thousand to that so that the cost for the playground for that move could be absorbed with fund balance so that the money that was allocated in this budget and next budget could go to other things like Fish and Cove. So that was my rationale in that. So the, the full plan per se and the exact amounts, I don't, we haven't finalized yet because there's still, there's a lot of information we still need to gather. But I try to be considerate of how we can move, how we can move things around so that we can better utilize the hundred thousand dollars that we have set aside in these two fiscal years.
So one of the things that we talked about at the last meeting was the plan, right? Like you want us to approve this move, but like you still haven't laid out what the plan is. And so we still don't have the plan.
Well, I think, I knew we had to focus on the budget right now, so that's why we didn't put that on.
It is kind of under budget, right? Because you, you're asking us to approve the money attached to the move, but you haven't explained the move.
I can, I will, if that's what you want as part of this conversation, I will put that on the, on the agenda for the next.
That's what I asked for at the last meeting. Like, so I was expecting to see it as part of this.
Well, we don't have it, so.
That, that was, I'm, I'm, that was not clear that you wanted that here. I mean.
Oh, I'm pretty sure I said in order to approve the budget, I'd like to see the plan. But, okay. The, my other, the next question. So the athletic fees for actual officials are showing up in two places. They're showing up in the athletic budget and then there's additional ones in the stipends?
No. The officials, so let me just make sure, because I, I had a very in-depth conversation with Mr. Dover to make sure that I explained it correctly. So the line item in the actual budget for, and, and I think I asked for some clarification because I couldn't, I couldn't figure out the ten thousand you were referencing.
Because when you asked before, they said that the, that that amount, the fifty-seven thousand dollars was the amount paid to the Rhode Island Inter-Scholastic League for the actual officials and includes both the high school and the middle, middle.
Yeah, so that is the money. So we have two fees for Rhode Island Inter-Scholastic League. We have the one that's down at the bottom for twenty-three, four hundred.
Yeah.
That is for allowing us to have the actual teams and for the work to assign the officials. The fifty-seven thousand dollars actually pays the officials for the work that they do. In the stipends, this, the, the, the money that is in the stipend section is for the coaches, stipends for the coaches. So the.
But it actually says officials in it, and that's why I'm questioning it. Like there's a line in the stipends that says.
It's different than the coach line?
It's different from the coach.
Is that the ten thousand dollars that you were referring to? I couldn't find, when you, I, thank you for the clarification, because I couldn't find what.
Can you tell me what line it's on, Jen?
Sure. I have, I have it open, so let me see. So the, the athletic stipends should be for the coaches. There are event staff that, there are people who work the events that are not our employees. And there are our event staff that are our employees. Then we have coaches that are not our employees and coaches who are our employees. That makes up that like kind of grouping of athletic stipends at the bottom, because it has to be broken out just based on how it's coded, because they're paid differently. Then if you can tell me the, the ten thousand dollar line, I just want to, I will get the clarification. I just.
So the event staff.
So the people who work the, the scoreboards, right?
But it's, no, it's, the, the, the scoreboard is, I believe, parent volunteers. The event staff are the teachers and staff that are willing to come to be there as supervision.
So when an assistant principal, is that a football game?
So it's not the assistant. So, nope, it's the teacher. So it's not the administration. Administration, administration, we're not paid to go to the event. We're there because we are there.
So let me clarify. That's what I said, yeah, the teachers.
It's teachers, TAs, it's other, it's non-administrative staff that sign up to be at the games for supervision. That's the event staff.
And then all the administrators go too?
For some.
A lot of them. You all kindly go as well. Okay.
Okay, okay. That makes, that makes more sense.
Okay, and I, I just, I still didn't catch what line it was, because I want to make sure I get you the right information. And if, and you can send it to me, you can mail it to me if that's.
And I am curious to see, because athletics is a large portion of the budget and there is three hundred, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars between staff and stipends, like, and so, and then there was an additional, you said football's getting additional, like, so I just, I feel like you're getting a hundred, you're getting a hundred, like, is, so is there, is there fluff in here?
So I have, I will, I'm gonna email it.
Because this is not our athletic staff. This is all coaches.
Correct. Our athletic staff is in the salary section, so it's in a totally different section, yes. So the answer to that is no, because I have the actual breakdown from Mr. Dover of what is contractually, so we have to contractually keep every stipend that could be done for every sport that we have, has to go in here. Because if we have that sport and we offer it and we need a coach for it, we have to be able to pay for it.
Yep.
We do not always have a coach for a particular sport because we don't have it. So is there sometimes room in this? Yes, because it depends on what happens year to year. Is there fluff? No. Because we have to contractually budget for it. He and I went through it. I have the list. He gave me dollar for dollar, all of the coaches and what is required. And then the additional, it is actually broken out in this document, that additional football amount. And it lists what they are.
Okay.
Could we rectify the unified sports coaches stipends? There was a concern or a question regarding their stipends versus other coach stipends?
So they get paid, so the unified, unified sports is paid through special Olympics. It is a different, it is different. It's not part of our contract.
Alright.
And I believe the issue is that they cannot be paid from both. And I am looking into it, it's a conversation I've had with.
And we have to look at it when we renegotiate contracts.
Yeah.
Okay, because they get paid way less than, yep.
Yes, and she has brought it to my attention, but it, it's not part of the contract or in the budget, so it is not in here.
Yep.
Because of how they currently get paid.
Understood.
But it has been brought.
And I know you said that we can't pay for the, even just this year, the uniforms and the helmets out of the gate receipt funds for athletics. So I would like to know what the plan is for that money?
So, let me clarify, because I want to make sure, we can, we can use that money. And that is a school committee decision. So the school committee says, yes, we would like to obligate, you know, we would have to come do a presentation to you saying, this is what we plan to use. And if, if you so choose, we can allocate that money if we would like to remove it from the budget. My concern with that, that expressed in my response and that I expressed last time, is that when we start removing things that are like operationally required, like these are things that we need to provide to the students to be able to do these sports. So as a district, it's, it's kind of our obligation to have that. When we remove it from the operating budget, we, we then run into the problem where at some point, we're gonna have to add it back if we don't have the gate receipts to fund it in the future.
Yeah, but like it's the same thing as Chromebooks. We pulled out Chromebooks and we're paying for it.
Right, so, so yeah, the answer is yes, we absolutely can do it. And then that's, I would say that's at your discretion. Like I can give you my guidance and advice on what I think. And if we are in a position where we feel that this year, you know, we need this position, we have to have this position, we need to figure out how to come up with another hundred and forty thousand dollars. Those are things that we can absolutely do and we can consider. So it's not, it's not, no, we can't. It's just not, it's not a best, it's not a best practice, but we can absolutely do it.
So, sorry, one question about the gate receipts. In theory, like, wouldn't there be some predictability about how much we make year to year?
Yes, there should be.
Like in theory, you took five years, six years, you get a kind of good sense of, you can expect X from gate receipts.
There should. There, and you're absolutely right. Yeah. You run into issues where you have years like COVID, where obviously that happens, things aren't happening. But you're also not spending the money, so it's not like it's depleting it. So, yes, you could.
I know it's hard to do historical lookbacks right now because of that, but like in theory, you could look at twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
We could say we average this amount, so we are comfortable allocating X amount every year from this line to that. Similar to what we do with the fund balance.
Right, right.
Absolutely.
So I, I asked about the electricity contract and in your response, you said that you were waiting for feedback from the town?
I thought you were referencing the solar issue, so I apologize. I thought it was referencing, because we also had a question about.
Yeah, I saw that was first now.
The solar, solar, so, so that was my response to that. So you were talking about the NRG one, so no, I, I need to follow. I need to finish up with that. Chris and I met very briefly about it. He sent me some information with a contact that he had regarding information that he sent. I need to follow up on.
Okay.
And I apologize, I misunderstood the question.
No, that's okay.
Um, oh, sorry. I had a question, sorry. Leslie, for the emails that we got regarding the library materials at the elementary school, was that, and if you would reply to, I missed it, apologies. But was there an error? Like what?
Absolutely one hundred percent oversight on my part. It was in my version, like I have a live version. I have, I have to do some manipulating to get it into PDF form. And I am one hundred percent confident I did something when correcting that. There is a budget. It's always been a budget. Dr. Swizer gave me a budget for it. It has always been in the rule totals. Um, it has always been in the rule totals, um, like, high up, but, um, it's now in the documents. The document you have, they have a twenty-one hundred dollar budget, so that was an oversight. And I'm glad that it was brought to my attention, because I didn't realize that it was in the document that you all had, so. And I did, I did, I added those to the bottom and made sure that they were answered. So all of the questions that came in, I think all but one of the questions that came in regarding that were, were answered, and I'm happy to address them now if you'd like, or.
No, no, that's fine. We can share that information.
Okay.
Uh, thank you. Quick question about the Chromebooks. Um, I know that you're, you said you were gonna use fund balance this year for them. Um, Chaz, do we, are we doing the one-six?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry. Hold on, hold on.
Megan directed to Ken.
So, okay, um, Leslie then, um, are we, are we, every year, we have to re, is it every year with the Chromebooks? One-six-nine, or what else?
Yes, yes, every year there are three grades that we refresh.
So going forward, we will, um, uh, we're not gonna do the fund balance for Chromebooks going forward, or is that just gonna be year-to-year decision?
Uh, it, it is not ideal to do it.
So, yeah, actually, I have a, like, a thought with that. So I totally understand your rationale, I'm pulling some of the other one-time item things out, right? Like, we buy Lyft, no problem, right? We bought the Lyft, that makes sense to come out of fund balance. I am extremely, and I know I talked about how it could be in capital, but like, I am concerned about presenting a budget to the town that has annual costs removed. And so if we do decide to go that route, like, I feel like we need to be very transparent and clear about that, because I don't want to misrepresent, like, our need. And that is a piece that is a misrepresented need, I think, from an operating standpoint, even though I believe it also is capital. Like, I know I'm saying two things, but I am concerned. I think it's very smart what you did when you pulled out the one times, but that one particularly is not.
Yeah, cause it's gonna be an annual cost.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't disagree.
Yeah.
Um, I think what I wanted to represent when I did this was to pull out what we can, because I wanted to be able to represent some of the staffing, because I think there was a need. And I think without pulling out that this year, I, I just don't think the staffing was, was gonna be able to happen.
Okay, I just wasn't sure what your rationale was.
But I, I agree very much that when you pull out, just like we were just talking with the gate receipts, when you pull those items out, eventually, what if you have a year where you do not have a surplus, and you have a deficit? And tho- those are realities that, you know, there's so much flux from year to year, you cannot just rely on the fact that every year you're gonna have money that's gonna increase your, your surplus, I mean, your fund balance. So.
Well, we also have to remember that the majority of our fund balance was, one, because of the state, which we don't control whatsoever, like, with the appropriation, but also vacancy dollars, and vacancy dollars with the great work that, that Dr. Dubas and the team has done to fill those roles, like, that is an anomaly. That's still in effect from COVID and different things, and so that's not gonna continue to happen, cause we have filled those, so.
No, and I, and I, you know, even though there are different revenue streams that we've put on here that we know, that, that we're confident that we can account for, it's not like we're gonna have an additional million dollars on top of, on the revenue of what we budgeting. Um, I think we've done a good job in budgeting our revenue, so I, you know, there will always be some variation, but I don't think we're gonna have that variation that we had last year as well. So there's, it's kind of like two-part there. Um, I can certainly rework it and put the Chromebooks back in. It's something that maybe we can, or I can do, like, we can split it, and we can do some fund balance.
Was that the only reoccurring one that you pulled out?
Yes, actually, I believe it is.
Just something I'm just thinking about, maybe.
Right, or could we tell the town, like, that we, that what we did, like, does, like, kind of be like upfront with that and say, we didn't want to, you know, we, that we did that, but next year, we'd have to put it back.
It's coming back, and.
It's coming back, just so they know.
One of the documents that I did include that I kind of consolidated on this slide, um, I just didn't wanna be super redundant with what I was providing to you, but um, one of the things was when I was talking about, um, the allocations, the recommended allocations that prior school committees had made, um, included in that was two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars toward, um, technology and upgrades and refreshes. That was like a recommendation, like, hey, you should have this in your fund balance, and you should assign it so that it's there. Um.
That was one of our questions, right? What, what we could use that, there was a fund that had.
It's the computer.
It's the computer fund, and we did, and, and Chaz and I did, kind, we investigated, we got to the bottom and knew exactly what we were thinking. It's the insurance and it's the repair funds. So there's insurance dollars that come in, repair dollars that come in. If you look at most of the in and out, it's the dollars that come in for repair, or the dollars that go out for repair. The extra money for the insurance is used to replenish Chromebooks that are beyond repair. So that's what they use that fund for. So when.
But there's money in it.
Because we probably.
It should be at zero.
Well, we probably had money, and again, I investigated as best I could with, Chaz and I were looking back to see, um, that there were like insurance dollars that came in, and the kids were not in school, so there wasn't as much damage, there wasn't as many things, so there's not as much usage.
So it sounds like we are able to spend that down, because in theory, every year, you'd be getting that one-to-one.
So it, it should, there should be.
But it may not be one-to-one, because even though insurance money is coming in, and we're paying for the insurance, right? Is that what we're saying? So it's what, what families.
Well, and, like, if someone loses a charger, they pay for the charger, the charger gets replaced, that is like an in and out. You'll see the revenue and an expense that kind of goes.
But if I pay insurance for my children, and they never have to go in to say, hey, my computer's broken, that's revenue. So it's not a direct one-to-one, so there would be funds in there that we can then look at and see how is that being managed.
There was like seventy thousand dollars.
Alright, so let's look into that.
So, and, and, so what, from what Chaz and I could determine is that there was years where money was not spent, and so we have now built it up. And now that everything's kind of going the way it should be, it's the in and out, so yes, there's money that can be spent.
We, Victor, we'd like to phone friend.
So charges aren't covered under insurance? We don't have those.
No, 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 that's the money that, the, when the parents pay, it's like the money comes in, the money goes out for the charger.
And, uh, insurance is kind of really cheap versus the repair price, so it is kind of organic.
Got it. Mike, did you have more questions?
Yeah, just one more quick question. Um, did we ever find out anything from Trish on the money that they basically need to allocate somewhere?
So in one of the documents that I sent.
Okay, thank you. I just have not really got.
Okay.
Chance to go through it all?
Nope. Um, so we looked at, um, how we could use the strategic spending plan, um, with the things that would have the most impact. And so attached was, um, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of that, um, that could be allocated.
But that wasn't in the budget that got presented, correct?
No, that's in the enterprise.
No, no.
But no, it wasn't in the enterprise budget.
Um, no, so, excuse me, I'm losing my voice. So the budget had, I think there was like a hundred and ninety thousand of that was presented, and so what came out of that was, there's a lot of money to use, how do you want to use it?
Okay.
So we came up with a plan.
Okay.
Um, and looked at what could be spent in that year, and what we could do, and so attached was eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that if, um, if we liked that plan, would go into the budget.
So would the budget get revised then?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So, so we wanted to show the plan and see the plan and make sure that that was something, like, there weren't any changes or things that, if people had questions on it. Um, and then, and, and unfortunately, Trish is not here, um, tonight, but I can certainly, you know, I can take any questions back and we can go over it. Um, but the, the goal would be that that would then go, we would, those were in addition to, so the budget wouldn't be reduced in any way. Those, what we presented were additional.
There's no, there's no way to take the money that's in that fund and pull out operating costs?
Um, so we, there are some that we could, but again, same thing, we pulled them out. Um, one of the things we were looking at was the fees for the school cafe. Um, and that was one of the, but we're still waiting on information for that. So that was one of the, um, items that I think would change a few things, cause it would ultimately change the cost of that, um, and it would be a give back to our families. Um, but there are some, like, general, like, operating expenses, like the electricity, some of those that, that we could certainly, we can certainly pull things out if we'd like to see that budget reduced. Um, because even with the plan that she had, there's still considerable amount of money left in that fund, so.
Okay, it's ten thirty. I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
No, you don't have, of course not, you don't care about that?
Oh, I don't care about that. Um, thank you, let me read the comments. So. It appears like it is bedtime. Why aren't you trying to open? So correspondence, uh, January twenty-second, Holly Quinn, New School Bond Project. January twenty-fourth, Holly Quinn, New School Bond Questions. January twenty-seventh, Karen Martone, Questions on Bond Reimbursement and Enrollment Projections. January twenty-ninth, Joseph Cox, Student Drop-Off Immigration Officers. February third, Kathleen Carney-Badley, Protecting North Kingsham Students. February fourth, Halsey on Westall, Hello. February sixth, Meg Kerr, Climate Conversations Lecture on State Climate Activities. February seventh, Alice Adler, Protecting Kids. February ninth, Lori Duffy, Please Continue to Support Trans Students. February tenth, Jesse Friedman, Transgender Youth and DEI. February tenth, Julie Gendron, Hamilton Library Budget. February eleventh, Howard Brown, Actions the School Committee Must Take to Become Align with Federal Law. And February eleventh, Polly Annan-Burn, DEI. That's it. Now, you have a question to take?
Second.
Okay, Alice, a favor?
Aye.